Be very po- we this is gonna move, we get this moving and I think, I don't see any between the two, I don't see any hurdles to get this moving. That's open. The to get Harrison Shear moving. We gotta get the zoning, the O P E zoning. If we can't come up with an O P E, well, it depends on the community.
Last week I went to months ago, that was a big issue, uh, six months ago.
For whatever reason it languished, I gotta restart.
Sure, this one's for Dan.
It's moving forward, so.
I know how to do it from this one.
The next step.
I don't know how to do it from that one.
The next step is.
If I sit over there, I can't understand what they're saying, that's why I'm here.
We and I D E have to agree on the zoning, O P E zoning.
I still wanna say huh like ten thousand huh.
Because if the zoning doesn't fit, what the I D A wants to do, they're not.
Isn't it a table two for table?
They said that much of that.
Hit table one.
For whatever reason it got stalled, I just pulled the trigger, it's restarted, it's moving.
Are you supposed to back that? Table one, Peter's good.
So in the next two to three months, optimistically, we'll have to crank out the O P E zoning and then.
Will anybody be figured out?
Well, that's that's to the plans done, you get improved, right?
Try the, try the, uh.
Yes, and probably in the next two or three months, planning can.
Oh, why do you?
It's up to them to get it to there.
Correct, but the key is that, there's a disconnect between I D E.
Get that one, nothing else leaves real question.
Let's just go back to your, your base.
And who?
There is a disconnect between the I D E and planning. And a disconnect now is going away.
I thought I E D was like on their own.
And they're, they're probably recording on it.
Yeah, that's fine. The I D A.
Right, I D A's on their own, right?
The I D A is essentially on their own, but they control Harrison Shear.
Right, that's what I knew.
Right, so that disconnect between the I I D A and planning is now getting fixed.
Right.
So jointly, we're gonna move forward with an O P E zoning acceptable, and then the next stages occur, whatever those next.
But that's been in the works for when you were with them, remember? Right, I went to a meeting with them a couple times and.
I'm telling you it's moving.
Yeah.
And it's moving and it gets better.
That's why we were holding up then.
Don't pound the table anymore, guys. First pound of the table, we, and we jumped into a different screen, so.
So I guess we're gonna have to keep the mayor off.
Peter, can I change the settings on this to record?
Not Cruz chef.
Can I change the settings on this to record, or no?
I, I don't know why, I mean, I've never worked with that, so I would.
Did he use? No, but you're not using him for her, right?
Did he use his left shoe or his right shoe?
Not, not that I know of.
Okay.
I will bury you is what he said.
Cruz chef?
Yeah. He pulled his shoe off.
So he said I would bury you, that's my.
I actually seen him go down seventy when he was here, actually seen, yep.
Cruz chef?
Really?
I'm standing in Long Island, there at Lisbon, he went by in car.
Dude, that's like in the fifties.
Oh my gosh.
That's cool.
Yep, actually seen.
That is very cool.
Pretty neat, he had a nice car, had plenty of money.
I hope you're out there waving an American flag with forty-eight stars on it.
No. No, no, he actually went down, uh, well, it's forty, then it went seventy, still.
That's cool.
It thinks it's got another display there.
That's cool. That's cool.
Actually seen him go up.
Take this out. See if it goes back. What are we doing? Okay, it came back, alright. Cause if you notice, you lost all this stuff because it thought that it had the other way, so.
Do we need more room at, do we need more room at table for staff?
They're taking care of it right now.
Okay.
Oh my gosh, Heather Smith is in the building.
This is a usual hot floor.
You're in the building.
Did you now, or have you ever had communications with the Communist Party?
She's waving, they're waving the white flag. Pat, I think they're, Pat, Pat, I, Pat, I think they heard the rumors of a fifty percent raise by the mayor.
Obviously, obviously, by the way.
They, they agreed to take twenty-five. Hey, if we got twenty-five percent raise, we'd get fifty dollars?
These are all for yours.
No, you would get one thousand dollars.
Oh.
Over the lifetime of you.
Ah, okay.
Mine could be very short at this point.
Yes, sometimes, these are all for you to sign. You have to sign when you get a chance.
I just thought I saw it there.
Yeah, I pulled all the, I just did them today, I pulled all the policies we've talked about in the last year or so, and I'm gonna put them in a book.
Oh, okay.
For the council.
Peter, I'm convinced one day there's gonna be a power of attorney in here, we're gonna miss.
My bro.
I don't know.
I don't have any money, so.
Didn't have one time. They moved his table over this way, so he's like, he's got room over there.
What would you like, a copy of the budget?
Over here, budget.
That's just the latest revenue and expense report, I just printed it today after I keyed, um, last month.
That's our channel.
Oh.
So is this different from the one we were, is this different from the one we got yesterday?
Can I read you the chat?
Oh, that's the same, that's it, right there, it's just, and I gave you one, it's just an updated revenue and expense report, I didn't have time to key the country. Before the meeting the other night, so I keyed it today and printed this, and I did get that.
I think it's out there, right in the middle.
Start typing it over.
Mister Mayor, he's got, you hear that, Pat?
I might be able to sit right here and look here everything, at the end of this table.
Yeah, but that still doesn't put it.
Well, I know, but with the cord stretching and everything, you know what I mean?
That does sound side. Oh, that's if we get a door from here, I'm not concerned we're gonna get a door, I suspect we're gonna send you outside.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Cool, that does mean the last one is wrong. Yeah, definitely.
Always have problems on the side. Don't think we were successful getting it working.
Well, we'll see.
It looks like my monitor's like going out to the.
Right, so it has to go in here.
It has to go in there?
Right, cause the data comes into here, it comes out of there, goes in here, right? The picture comes out of there, goes in here.
It goes out of here, out of there.
Yeah, it has to go in here.
In there. That could be it, Peter.
I think it was input.
I would have more room over here, so if I can hear over here, I'll sit over here.
Well, it is, the problem is it thinks that this is the, this is the backward, it thinks that this is the second screen, and that's the first screen.
My hat tomorrow is for opening to the customer.
Is projector still here? Projector's still on.
Yep.
We're not getting anything here. And there's the. Let's do, let's reverse it, it's in the desktop, it's in the slide, okay, so reversed it, so this is down the primary, that's the secondary. And you can see it's reading it, cause it's changed to that dimension.
So it's gotta be over there.
We can do the same thing at the other table.
Yeah, she just wanted to go sit here at the end.
Right.
Do we have it on, is, are we on table one over there?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Are they, are they, are they labeled for acting?
Yes.
It's chart table two.
Did they switch anything when they were working in the other one?
No, because we were having the problem before the, the day switches. And they didn't change any of this.
Is your, is your thing, uh, sunflowers?
Yes.
I see it on here, is it dark enough to see?
Did you see it there?
It's over there, it's just not up there.
Hold on a second, let's.
Something's going on over there.
So she's getting some sort of.
Input's working.
Yeah, so it's getting there, so that's what I'm wondering if, if the problem's with the projector at, at this point.
Well, so it has to be.
Oh, what about whatever training they were doing the other day, did they switch something around?
All, all we did was put a DVD on.
There, something just showed up there here.
Yeah, I saw that.
Hold on, I just turned it off, hold on, it's gonna, it's gotta come back on again.
Other use for these, uh, they just get them on to burn. That's why it says need power, or maybe there's enough power coming off this to, cause it is a, I mean, it is a digital to analog conversion essentially. Do you still see the sunflowers over there?
On, on here, yes.
Alright, well, what do we do to get that to here?
I'm trying to.
So obviously, this is working.
Yep, so that's from there to there is working.
Yeah, projector's not on now.
Right, yeah, the projector's off on this one, Peter.
Okay. Alright, power projector on, that's right here. That, that shuts the picture off.
See, it's showing up here.
Is that the reset?
On.
Yeah, the.
We got it here, so, so it's getting here.
Is the presentation on the?
It's on hers.
We just.
That's what I turned my actor back on.
Oh, I see, for me, alright.
Alright, we got the please, we got, we got the please, please, please go there.
Right, which is just the projector.
Right, but at least projector's coming up.
Yeah, the picture was.
We're gonna do, uh.
That's good.
Okay, yes, picture be off.
DPW departments first, so the guys can be done and go home, they have to get up early.
Number one, table one. Switch them off, table one.
Shar, can you try that again, like the?
Plates clean filter, it's gonna be.
Yeah, it needs to be cleaned. Did you do anything here, Martin?
There's no filter.
Okay, we now got a three and four here.
That's because you took it off of the table.
Record, what do you wanna record? Just a presentation or? Probably one where the camera's show up. Yeah, it's probably that, if you're recording.
I'm, yeah, I'm recording, but I have a, I record off of camera one, but she's also recording, and I'm, so I'm sorry, Shar, can do that.
Can you do it again?
Okay, there's camera one.
And that, we have it on the little recorder, we're okay.
That's not an issue.
See, we lost, clean the.
Well, that, that goes out after a few seconds anyway.
Is your information when we were driving? No, I can save till we drive. Because we can bring that other computer over, because we know that it may be something, maybe your computer is having.
Give that out over there. Somebody else has worked.
None of those work. Yeah. Well, I'm just trying to get, none of them, I'm just trying, these are inputs, and I'm just keeping, none of them seem to, they look like.
PC one.
There's, there's nothing on any of them, they're all. They're all.
Go to the projector. There you go.
You're on.
Okay, yeah, but it doesn't light up, I kept hitting it, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't light, that's, alright, here you go, Sean.
I thought it.
Good job.
Release on lock. I get to go fast.
Thank you so much.
Aw, it's pretty.
Alright. Okay, Charlene, let us know when you're ready.
Well, we're gonna go over the sixteen expenses for the public works departments, they're operating in capital, so that those employees can do what they need to do and then leave, they have to get up really early in the morning to report to work. So we'll start with parks, we'll do operating in capital, no, we'll start with roads operating capital, then we'll go to parks operating in capital.
What page?
Then water and sewer operating in capital. So, on the general fund, the first.
Do we, do we have a, do we have a page number?
We're gonna go to page number. Five.
Page number what, five?
Page number five of the general op, of the G F.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the first page five.
Yeah, the first.
So the sheet doesn't have the comments, I think.
No, you need the, the big one, Pat.
No, that's not, that's not.
Sorry, I'm looking to one.
Oh, no, that's just our. Did you have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's just, yeah.
That's just the most recent revenue and expenditures for the.
Alrighty, well, parks and rec department can start at, uh, well, I guess, well, salaries and wages, that's something we decide later and close, so I assume it's just a place, oh, we're doing roads first?
Yeah.
Alright, it's at the top, okay.
Yes.
Salaries and wages will come from the mayor, and we'll hit that later, um. Brian, this is gonna be your department, anybody got any questions about anything here?
How'd you eat your one? Do we have, um, so, uh, fuel for vehicles?
Yeah.
Gas has gone from four bucks to two and a quarter. Yet, we're showing more money for fuel.
Do we need more vehicles?
Well, you know, all it takes is some terrorist attack for it to be back at four dollars.
Yeah, we got a street sweeper, we got. Alright, we got a street sweeper, we bought a whole bunch of other equipment, which is last year.
Well, we do have one extra vehicle, I think the other equipment we have just replaced older equipment, but you already do have one extra vehicle, it's a, it's a point well taken, uh.
Even if we have an extra vehicle, gas is.
I agree, it went down forty percent, uh, but it could also go back a lot.
That's right.
That's right, I mean, you could definitely tweak a little out of that.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the actual we spent as of June thirtieth, that's the fiscal year fourteen actual number, we spent eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two, the gas has come down a little.
Okay, so the actual, yeah, okay.
Oh, so our actual was, was, yeah, was, was nineteen, so our proposed is nineteen.
But is that actual in two thousand fourteen?
Yeah, that was actual fourteen.
Yes.
But not fifteen?
I'm good.
No, we don't know what fifteen's gonna be.
Fifteen is the budget amount, we don't have actual shit.
We don't have actual, what, fourteen must've hired a year.
Yes.
Uh, you.
I'm good.
You, uh, you, council would be fine with dropping that away, but that's up to council.
You wanna drop it a grand?
To you guys, we're not gonna use it if we don't use it.
Yeah, if we don't use it, we don't use it, so, if the budget wasn't balancing.
Right. And you're looking to.
Yeah, we're looking to save, I'd say let's cut a, a, a grand or two out, but at this point, I don't know that we need to.
And maybe it's a good idea as you go through this process to set that standard now, if you wanna look at that, be consistent as you go through.
Yeah, if we later jack something up and we're looking for some money, this could be a good place to take it from.
There's another question, the street lighting, does the town own the street lights already rented, or what?
We, uh, we pay for the street lights as far as owning the lights.
Yeah, I think they own them, don't they?
They, cause they replace the bulbs.
Yeah.
They own a.
That's what I'm asking, does, does the town own the lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say they own them.
Yeah, they own them, we, we tell them when they're busted and they come out and replace them, they're charging us.
The power company, the power company owns and maintains it, and part of the money they charge us is for electricity and maintenance.
Part of the money's what?
Part of the money's used for maintenance and, 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 we pay X for the light and they, they maintain it.
The reason I ask this, I don't know whether we can get a better light there, because we're paying thirteen thousand dollars a month just to lighten those four. And I mean, the reason I ask is if there's a cheaper light that can go in there, maybe that means saving our money.
That's a very good question. Can we ask if there's a cheaper light that can be used in Monica, I think, assume somebody's taking notes during this, we certainly hope so.
I mean, to me, that's a lot of money.
Those that think they have a great memory, excuse me.
We won't take notes, we don't take notes.
Well, if somebody can take notes, cause those that think they have a great memory, one hour from now, are not gonna remember.
I'm sorry, what'd you just say?
Exactly. So I think that's a point well taken, let's see if we.
Charlene, Ron, you're, uh, you're.
I, that's why I asked, we are.
They're usually mandated what type of bulb, because we wanted to make sure they didn't use I version sodium, so I got reports that people thought that was a high current. Ask if there's an option, ask if there's an option, and let's review it.
Yeah, I suspect as they're upgrading, they're upgrading to new.
They may be upgrading LEDs, let's, let's look at the options and see, certainly I've, I've heard pushback from the community about the yellow lights, cause some have said it makes.
They didn't like those, yeah.
Makes it feel like they're the high prime area.
People like it, and they're ugly, yeah. So, yeah.
Well, so I can tell you, we do not pay for the kilowatts used, this is a unit price per fixture.
Interesting, well, maybe.
I bet.
So it's not gonna save us anything to cut down.
Unless they give us a lower unit price, but that's good to know, you have to make sure it saves money.
It would benefit them to use.
All good questions.
More efficient lights.
Good, good question.
That's right, yeah, right, because they're charging us the same, so.
They reach, reach out and see if we can do something, that's a good idea, there's a lot of street lights, it might be a nice.
It's probably a right.
I will say for, for years, we never asked any questions, because.
Yeah, we really shouldn't call that.
Yeah, well, the reason, the reason is, is because for years, I remember one of the numbers years ago, and we figured that from our calculations, they were undercharging us per light.
They have never added.
And we never wanted to ask.
Okay, I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind everybody we are filmed.
I know, but, 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 but I, but I have to say, but our, our, our calculations were that, that we thought they were under billing us per lights, and so our speculation was, and, and Charlene's backing me up, we didn't wanna say anything, cause we don't want them to come out here and audit us. If they come out here and audit us, we were scared the bill might go up.
Your budget number would probably go up.
A lot.
If they actually came out and audited us, audited our, our light counts.
This would be live streamed.
Can you relive?
Well, it's not, they, they, no, it's not being, it's not being, it's not being shown, you would have to, they're gonna have to go to the C M C and decide they went click on this and sit through it.
It is.
Well, plus, it's not our responsibility to do that, it's their responsibility.
Right.
I think point well taken, let's keep going, let's keep going.
But, 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 we, we, I remember when I was on Streets and Roads, we, we looked at this for a number of years, and we used to put a lot more dollars in there, and we've cut the dollars back substantially, we, we've really reduced this item.
Oh, yeah, we used to budget over two hundred thousand, but that's when electric rates were really high too, and even though we don't pay per kilowatt hour for this particular account, it, they were charging more because electricity costs more.
Yeah. So we good on, uh, rest of Streets and Roads, it sounds like?
Yeah, the snow removal is always a roll of the dice.
Yeah.
Alright, I, I'm not hearing more questions on Streets and Roads, Charlene, what do you wanna hit next?
What kind of park, well, let's go to Streets and Roads Capital, or do you wanna go Capital second?
Um, since we're on the parks page, why don't we do that, yeah.
Let's do operating first, okay, so now.
It's just easier than running everybody through different pages, you too.
Yes. You're right, so, okay, so parks.
The only question I have is beautification down there, you're jumping to thirty-one thousand, are we, are we planning on doing something there?
They're planning on finishing their, um, park sign project, they will be doing a number of signs, it looks like about six.
Bronson Field, Village Gate, Wildwood, Best Park, Village Park Sign, but I actually, as part of this process, and since we're doing these all together, they didn't know that when they first bid this out, was asked on the competitive bidding, cause this price just jumped from a small couple thousand per sign to now you have a big package, which is thirty thousand, that should be competitively bid.
Right.
Uh, Monica asked, uh, excuse me, was it, I'm, what, there was.
Mary.
Mary.
No, Monica and Charlene, we were on the phone where I said, reach out to Mary.
Right.
Reach out to Mary, and she was gonna competitively bid it, so you can put this number in, but just cause it's here doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, this has to be a competitive bid, so that's the highest number it can be. But we still do, please follow up on that to make sure.
The idea's, yeah, since, since we're going to him saying, hey, we want six, can we get a cheaper deal than, but previously it was one, and then another, and then another.
Now we can. Yeah. Right, and cause we did find, we just made, uh, we're just buying historical signs for downtown, and found out we were about seven hundred dollars over budget, I asked Dick or Mike, just asked them, and they could reduce, reduce the price, lo and behold, they dropped it seven hundred, so, we're gonna make a phone call.
Excellent.
They don't call him Nick on dime rockin' for nothing.
Mary Hushour, um, got the beautification number together for me and the, um, number for the Mount Airy Arts Alliance, and she is gonna try and stop by later, she has an Arts Alliance meeting tonight, so if you do have any particular questions, um, if she does stop by tonight, we can ask her, or maybe she can come to the one next week.
Yeah, and I mentioned to you guys just one thing under the Recreation and Culture section, and we talked about this the other night, if you look under Movie Nights, we've increased that five hundred hours, that's to buy a transmitter so we can do drive-ins.
That's exciting.
It's gonna be Chilly Chilly Bang Man.
Now.
No, we were talking about Indiana Jones, the, the original Raiders of the Lost Ark, but.
It says, in action, you said we increased it five hundred, I don't see a previous expense in that one.
Well, I think it was, it was two thousand.
I don't see a previous.
It's fifteen, it's, uh, right?
Well, we just, we just, this.
We just never broke it out?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
It's, it got its own little subcategories this year.
Okay, I do have a little concern, we have not finished, I did have a query, and I don't believe we've resolved that query, uh, if we can just put an asterisk and come back, cause we have four thousand dollars assistance for building space, to make sure that we all know where that money's going, it's for rent, and I'm a little, a little concerned that.
Yeah, I'm. Can, can we just have, just a general discussion on the art?
Well, looks like about twelve hundred of it is rent.
Well, I just wanna have a general discussion on the Arts Alliance, so to the, our Arts Alliance friends, this is, you know, I support the Arts Alliance a hundred percent, but.
Yes.
You may wanna wait till Mary's here.
Well, aren't we, cause I did have some.
Cause none of us are Arts Alliance members.
No, but, but.
That's true, we can, cause I actually questioned this, and I never got it finalized.
But it's.
Well, I asked the question too, and I haven't gotten it.
We haven't gotten an answer on this, I let it ride, usually I cut, if I didn't get answers, this one slipped by me.
But I have a more general question, so Arts Alliance is a private organization.
Okay. They are.
And the town is funding a private organization, I, I, I support them.
I know, I got you.
So, in my mind, the town should not be funding a private organization, now, the Arts Alliance became a commission of the town, it is now a town function, town body, but how do you justify Arts Alliance versus, um.
I would, I would say it wouldn't make them a commission, I would roll them under Parks and Rec.
However we do it, I think, however they do it.
Just for accountability, for accountability.
For accountability purposes, we, we are, cause someone could make the argument, and, and I, I can't come up with a good argument, but someone could say.
Point well taken, point well taken. No, you just made a very good argument.
Okay, well, but.
Okay, can we, can we put an asterisk and come back to this and look at the possibility of rolling them under?
Yeah, we oughta wait till Mary's here, just to, you know.
Yeah, and it's true, but even regardless of that, I think it's a bigger council decision, that there should be, from an accountability standpoint.
Yeah, we funded M A M S A for a number of years, and we still, you know, we.
And we have, we have funding in there now, so that maybe is a discussion you have along with M A M S A, cause actually you're gonna see twenty-five thousand dollars in there for a main street manager.
So let's, as the mayor suggests, let's, whoever's keeping notes, let's hold the dis, please.
Yeah, fortunately, the budget should go pretty smooth, but there are some issues that we need to get down.
Okay, can we flag that, so when we get back to that.
Let's, let's flag that.
And who's keeping track of the flags?
Charlene has a system to do it.
I'll hire you.
Somebody, unless.
Okay, yeah, so she, Charlene highlights it, so we can go back, she can get back to it.
Okay.
Anything else on Parks and Rec?
Chitty Chitty Bang Man.
Alright, wanna move to the next thing, Charlene?
Well, would you like to go to water sewer operating?
Well, or do you wanna go?
The double hit Capital?
I, I, I mean, I was just wondering, do we wanna finish?
Okay.
The page, I mean, I, you're, it's kinda your thing, but I was just thinking maybe, you know, we got.
Have to change the screen if you.
Planning and zoning is next, planning and zoning is the next one down, right?
Capital.
Boy, she wants to get to Capital, doesn't she?
Well, we were actually gonna try and do the, the.
I got you.
Ah, you wanna get them out of here?
Alright, I got you, okay, you're right, okay, alright.
So the guys could get home.
Alright, yeah, alright, keep them here.
So do you wanna do water sewer operating, or do you wanna finish with roads and, and parks and capital?
You tell us where you wanna go.
Yep, just you drop it.
And then you tell us what page it's on.
Yeah, give us a page number.
Alright, well, let's go to Capital, let's finish roads and parks, and that will be the capital improvement, page two, is the roads department.
Got it, Streets and Roads, Capital.
Page two.
Page two of capital improvement budget. Yeah, so it's page two of the, yeah, like in the middle, not quite.
Capital improvement.
Alrighty.
Yeah, I'm not there either, I, I'm, I'm lost. Yeah, I'm not there either, I, I'm, I'm lost.
It looks like this, guys, it's not a full page, that should be right there, it's not a full page.
Water and Sewer, Water and Sewer and Operating, is that it?
Who's page?
Page two.
Page two of Capital.
She said Capital, but it says Water and Sewer Operating Budget.
Mine's, no, no, then you're on the wrong page.
It's Capital.
Oh, I, Scott, keep going, I'm, I did the same thing, keep going.
The Capital. It says Capital Improvement at the bottom, and then it says Streets and Roads at the top.
Thank God. Okay, go for it.
Alright, well, you can see, we are taking a little bit less for paving.
Uh, on, on the paving, if I could just make a general comment.
Yeah.
Uh, they wanted four twenty-five, one of the things I'd like to do, and I start, and Ken, I don't know if I asked for this, I'd like to see the commission walk, actually walk the roads, we did that last year, and it was very productive, because even Barney agreed some things should have been changed, there Barney's out there in the audience, I'd like Barney, I'd.
Yeah, we don't talk about.
Okay, and so, but we can put an asterisk on this number, because there was times, we didn't really cut the money, but we rearranged what we were gonna do, and it should be a little bit better justified, and I'd like to have the commission take a look and give a recommendation, same as other commissions take a look and give recommendations, so, uh, the original request is four twenty-five, I took it to four hundred until Streets and Roads gives a recommendation.
Scott?
So, we're buying another truck? It seems like we're buying a truck on this cover year, even though it doesn't show for the past, I mean, at least when I've done the budget since two thousand ten, we call it.
Got one pickup truck in there, yeah.
Each truck every year, but it doesn't show up for thirteen, fourteen, but we're buying another one?
Where, what do you see? Well, I think thirteen, it was down below, it's listed as the dump truck at a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Alright. Yeah. And there was no pickup truck purchase for general funds, and fourteen, there is one scheduled this year.
And then.
Well, no, I meant we're just buying vehicles every year.
Uh, can we have Brian address that?
Our normal change after you, uh, we saw the mowing thing every twelve years, we're trying to stock that out.
How old is the truck this is replacing? It's twelve years. Okay, and, and there's, there's nothing wrong with that rollout, it's, Mike?
We got one fifteen.
Pardon me?
We got one fifteen years old.
You have one that is fifteen years old, yeah, I don't know that I would be so quick to replace them just because they hit a year mark, for sometimes things, but, I'm thinking twelve years on the road, you do have another litmus test for that, Chris, other than just years.
Our maintenance is, uh, a problem.
Okay, so, as long as we're not just simply basing, we do go with your recommendation, as long as we're simply not basing it on a year, certainly that can be one test and get you looking hard, but also evaluate the truck and make sure it's still doing service.
The other test is, when we, when we get rid of the trucks, nobody bids on them.
I, my first, my first.
I mean, they're sexually worthless when we're done with them.
My first years, Mayor, I went down and looked at the trucks, and when I could see through the floorboard.
You put your hand right through it, right?
I've seen through the floorboard, I was pretty sure that it was, but, but please, don't, don't let, I'm just, message the staff, don't let an age test be the only test, make sure it's actually worn out, and I'm sure they are, but let's, please, make that the test. So, when I ask for a response, why are you replacing it, please just don't tell me it's a year thing, it's a year thing, and it's worn out, which I'm sure we'd have got to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one we got, got, got panels down behind the door, let those go.
Is this the one we're replacing?
No, we're replacing, um, lawn, this truck.
Okay, and the same way I make that point about years, there may be one that needs to be replaced, or should be two trucks in here instead of one, if you've got an unsafe condition, and I think Councilman, uh, Phoebe's is pretty hot on this, we have an unsafe condition, we need that thing off the road.
We do have some in general, in Water Sewer, we have the two different funds, have trucks.
Okay. Alright, so let's just.
Okay, so there's another truck on the, okay, the, the other truck, the other trucks elsewhere in the budget, they're paying for it.
Water Sewer.
So, let's, let's, let's just keep that in mind, so you can know the philosophy of the town too, when you're making these decisions and recommendations. So, Brian, you feel that that truck has not only exceeded our year mark, it's also exceeded its useful life, and it's time to go?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're sending that bid request to the local driving ranges, so the people that hit balls out.
There will be no more vehicles, in my opinion, ever put out, of course, there will be some of it, everything that will now be traded into the dealer, they'll pick up a new truck.
Uh, we, we, we just had a bad situation.
The trucks we are now processing out of our fleet are not up to our standards to handle back-to-back lifts, and that's what I gauge our trucks up on. If I could say we lived in Arizona, we could run them trucks twenty years, but that's, the plows are shot off of them, the front, front frames are getting shot off of them, and the whole bodies, back bodies are rusting off of them.
That's true. That's true.
Yes, it may look good in the summertime, we wash and wax them, but there's a lot more that goes into my judgment of does that vehicle need to go.
There you, that's what I wanted to hear, that's what I wanted to hear.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
My professional opinion is.
Alright.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear, good job.
Paving, can I say, hey, Barney, I, I, and I've no, I, I, perhaps I ask this question every year, so, four hundred K for paving, um, we've always traditionally allocated for, in a neighborhood of four hundred K for paving. Do we know, do we have any documentation that shows it's four hundred K a year for the next, whatever many years is gonna do our schedule?
That's what, we need to update our five, we usually do a five-year plan, we need to update our five-year plan, so, that's part of what Ken, uh, myself, we're gonna go out and look at streets.
Okay. How, how old, how old is our current, how old is our current plan, more than five, ten?
No, we've, we've basically shot the five, the li- the last five-year plan, um, I mean, we have, we have streets listed, but again, every year it changes, like that, but.
It's like the sign order.
It was constantly shifting, depending upon how quick a street's deteriorating, we get a bad winner, and the street deteriorates faster, it moves up the list.
But are you still talking about lapping them two together, like we?
Yes.
So, that's gonna be a lot of paving done at one time, and, correct? That, that's gonna be quite a bit of paving done at one time.
Yes, yeah, using this year's funds and next year's funds.
Right, so that's gonna be a lot of paving done in a short period of time.
Some that.
Yeah, we do it spring, yeah, I mean, we haven't used any of that money in the budget yet, it's all going.
I mean, I mean. Right, so we're gonna lap it this year into next year, both at the same time.
That's okay, that's okay, that's.
Next year, first year live, that way, they don't have to move the equipment, you save money, and, and we're done.
It's cheaper, you save money once you get.
Well, that's a good point, because we, we're historically waiting until spring, why don't we do spring?
I got it.
Right. Well, we do, we, that's what we're doing.
And, but do spring, and then beginning of summer, beginning of this year, is that what you're saying?
They'll start. We're, they're gonna spend both, this year's budget, next year's budget, we'll both get done at the same time.
You pay. You pave at the end of one fiscal year.
Because they bring the equipment out, they pave, they pave to July first, and then they pave again after July first.
So, you don't have to move the equipment.
It's Tom, sit down, sixteenth and July.
Yeah, Tom, sure.
Alright. Chairman of Streets and Roads.
Okay, I'd also like to include the gentleman from Twin Ridge, have you invited him?
From Twin Ridge?
Trying to think his name, you know his name.
But he's not on the official board.
He's not.
Who are you talking about?
That's a shame.
Him and the previous chair, that.
Lucky for you, because he's the crewman on St. Rhodes.
He's still going to.
Alright, so, so Barney.
Oh, Barney, you're talking about, yeah.
Well, you think about five years.
Yeah, I'm talking about the actual, all the time, the job.
Well, how come Pop, Pride Bureau, can we ask Dave Pride Bureau to be on that as well? He's got paving experience, can we get Dave to walk with you as well?
Dave, I'm sorry.
Dave Pride Bureau, is he on Streets and Roads now?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he's experienced with paving.
I'd, I'd like him to be included.
Yeah.
Ken, Ken, can you reach out to Dave?
Yeah. So, Barney, the, you're gonna update the five-year plan, and that's the basis for knowing in the out-years, this amount is enough to keep us, keep it down.
Yeah, we, we do have streets listed in the five-year, in a five-year plan now, uh, but again, each year it changes, so, I, I don't always just rely on that.
Okay.
Um, some of those are based on age, and how, how long it's been, some, some roads.
Alright, but there's a method to that, alright, because for example, um, I think it's Summer, not Summer Sweet, what's the one down by the fire department?
Cottonwood?
Right.
Cottonwood seems to be deteriorating rapidly.
Right, that, that's just the intersection that, that.
Well, even as you go up, but, okay, yeah, I got it, that, thank you, thank you.
Hey, the, uh, uh, street.
I, I have a question on, uh, uh, we have annual storm drain project, seventy thousand dollars Nottingham.
Yeah.
Isn't that the pro, that's a Carroll County, Mount Airy Phase One program that they're paying for, because we make our contribution, isn't it?
Was that one of the, was that one of the projects?
Yeah.
This is the rain tax rebate, so to speak, or the help.
Basically.
Is this one of those?
Carroll County.
disqualified, yes, they will go on that plan, that's, any, any storm rain.
So it's.
Well, we have to take that out.
We're only, we're only paying twenty percent.
Well, here, now, here's the question, do we show the seventy thousand, I mean, we're spending it, and then do we show it coming in as income somewhere? Because a lot of times, that's the way we do it.
This was separate from that, I understood.
Okay.
You, you reduce the income by the amount of contribution you made to that.
Well, we haven't gotten to revenue yet, but I haven't yet, I will do that when we get to it.
So, this should be killed.
But this, this doesn't have anything to do with that, at least that's what I was told when I put this number in the budget.
What's the seventy thousand for?
Right.
I don't know, that's right. They're doing something in Nottingham Village.
But the repair for the storm pond is under the, uh, agreement with Carroll County, and they will pay for it, I mean.
This is storm and rain.
I think it's already an approved project, isn't it?
Yes, it's qualifying, it, it is a qualified project that will probably be done in fiscal eighteen, or something like that.
Now, do we have to still put in twenty percent?
No, because the twenty percent's already put in automatically by the reduction in the amount of money that Carroll County.
Sends us.
That's what we were talking about, a hundred and nine gets reduced by sixty-seven thousand, I think is our first, first year's payment.
Sixty-seven, then every year goes up by five percent.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, so this year, there, it's gonna be going.
Yeah, I was, I was not under the impression that this project had anything to do with all of that, this was something different.
Right.
It is approved. It is approved.
I don't know, is it?
It's just different, or is it?
No, no, it, it, it sounds like this already knows that that would qualify.
So, we're gonna get seventy K?
But my question is, is this the case where we have to output the money, and then we get it back from the county, or is the county?
Well, we've already output it, it's coming out of, out of our tax equity program from Carroll County.
The county raises the.
Okay, well, so, then it says to me, we should just cross out this seventy thousand.
Unless somebody, unless it's something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Alright, then let's, let's pull it.
And, and Dick, I thought there's a ten percent bonus for somebody that finds savings.
Oh, yeah, there's a ten percent bonus for finding a savings.
And it goes to the finer.
Thank you very much.
And a bonus from the town and five bucks to get your coffee at Starbucks.
Highlighted.
Um, I have one other, one other point.
Alright, well, sure, we're moving.
Alright.
Barney, can you explain to me, does this go along with the Carroll County improvements, or is this something separate, that may or may not qualify?
I don't have a comfort feeling to answer that, that qualifies, but, uh, they could say that it does qualify, so, as long as it does qualify, we need to make that fix, because we'd always do a bunch of other things that qualify, unless.
Okay. Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
So, do you want me to highlight this, and you will check on that? How do we determine if it will qualify, thus reducing our responsibility for Carroll County?
I, I don't know how long it takes for them to, um, to.
Between now, when we pass this, I don't think you're gonna get a confirmation on that.
Alright, Dick, do you feel confident removing that number?
Yeah.
Pull it.
And Monica goes to pull it.
I'd say pull it.
Wait, wait a minute, before you do that, before you do that, just a question, while we leave it there, and I'm, you know how, what the vocal about the curbs and sidewalks, we could always lay in North Main Street, if it's not used there, can we use it for?
Actually, no, it can't, we, when we have it in a category, it's gotta be in that category.
Yeah.
Well, this is what I'm saying, we can vote to change it though.
But you can vote to a budget amendment as well.
But we're just saying, if we need it, we'll vote it back in.
Can we, can we just flag that, we're gonna meet in a week, that gives us a week to tie this down, so, instead of pulling it and throwing it back in there?
That's the way, should the majority of council, of course, you can.
Can we just, can we just flag it, and?
You can.
So, you guys will bring it up next time, next week?
Um, because I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that, that we're right on that, and you just gave me that stuff the other night here, council meeting, and I can't find it right now.
Yeah, I mean, Bob, that's, that's the first Bob.
Call, call the question, Peter, for the consensus, whatever you want to do.
Well, it sounds to me like nobody has a problem waiting, can't hurt to wait a week, so, let's, let's move on.
No.
Flag it and wait.
Flag it and wave it.
Which will bring my original question, if, if our sidewalks, uh, need to be improved on South Main Street, I, I'd like to start there.
You can always up that number, you can up that number right now, if you feel we need that.
Well, I'm just saying, this money's here, if it's not gonna be used for that, maybe we can transfer it up to there, that's what I'm asking.
If you really want those sidewalks, I wouldn't worry about that number at all.
What do you think?
If those sidewalks need to be addressed, let's address them regardless of what we do there, it's, the, the two shouldn't impact each other, we shouldn't have to find extra there to fix the public sidewalk.
Charlene, where are we showing our changing number, we used to have that up in the corner.
It's right here.
Okay, so, right now, we're completely balanced.
That's the general fund bottom line, and then this is the Water and Sewer.
Okay. So, when we drop the se, when you pull the seventy out of there, then the general fund would go, okay, good, alright, oh, good, she's got it all set up, okay.
Well.
So, right now, we're balanced, alright.
Good job.
I have, I have one other.
I see two questions, Dick, Dick's talking first, so.
Um, you're down here, and you have rain tax projects, Frederick County.
Yeah, fifty K.
Please don't use the term rain tax, it has nothing to do with the rain tax, stormwater management, Frederick County projects, stormwater remediation.
Stormwater remediation.
Something, something, that's what it is, it has nothing to do with the rain tax.
I agree.
But it's.
So mandated storm, water management projects?
Whether, whether that was.
Whether this was. Stormwater.
But they are mandated, we wouldn't be doing them if they weren't mandated.
Stormwater managed, stormwater management. I would say stormwater management.
How about just call it unfunded mandates?
Yeah, Dick, 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 whatever we call it, wh- whatever we call it, we need to keep it in the budget as this is being forced upon us, this is nothing that the council decided.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think, we wanna portray in case somebody looks, that we don't wanna do this.
This is forced upon us by, by EPA and MDE.
Yeah.
The rain tax is forced upon us by the state legislature, they're two very distinct and different things, and I just think for the, the priority, you really should call it what it is, it's, it's, it's a stormwater management.
Do you wanna put in, uh, knowing you want, we only have so much space, we only have so much space, you want to put in SWM mandates?
Yes.
That sounds good.
That's a, that's, that's, that's pretty, that's a good, that's a good way.
I.
Alright.
Can you put a?
Because I realize you can only fit so much in there, so. So, if anybody looks, they know that this is not something we wanna do, it's something we're being forced to do.
We wanted to separate that on the budget to show.
It's supposed to be done this year, you'll see it in your light.
But Dick.
It's coming from some other county.
Right, we have to do this, so that's still, let's say.
Dick, that fifty K is what, I wanna be, be precise here. That fifty K is still what we are being forced to do by.
We, we have to, we have to remediate twenty percent of our impervious surfaces under, of the permit. But that's EPA and, and MDE. There is no funds provided by anybody to do that, so it is an unfunded mandate.
And, and Carroll is helping us with an eighty-twenty split. Frederick is not helping us at all.
Frederick, we pay it's all us.
Zero, we do zero at Frederick.
We don't get any support from the county at all.
I, that's the point I wanted to make. That, that continues to be an issue, so.
We look at next year's amount, what it's gonna cost to actually do that project.
We're gonna do one project that, we're gonna do the double ponds in Twin Ridge that are gonna satisfy our requirements for all five years, so we're gonna, Chris, originally we were talking about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for five years. Well, this project is gonna satisfy our requirements in one fell swoop.
Yeah, at eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for two years.
And that's why.
So I'm sorry, Monica, so just so everybody knows, I'm still calling the rain tax. Um, in the Frederick side, what will be our total expenditure because of the rain tax being crammed out?
Eight hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, close to five dollars.
Eight hundred fifty. That's for Frederick only?
Yes.
Over the course of five years.
We're paying the.
Well, we're doing it all in two years.
Paying the folks' tab, you know, that's all on us.
Yeah, you're looking here, three hundred thousand next year.
So. So, and this is a lot, this is serious money we're talking about. So have we looked into, because this is so much money. Have we looked into any sort of strategy that says, on the Carroll side of town, we're fine because we're in cooperation with Carroll County. On the Frederick side of town, we are going to join the way Frederick does it, basically tell the state, go ahead, because I mean, where are we?
Frederick County didn't do that. What can I, what can he say is, you not only have an unfunded mandate to meet a permit requirement for stormwater management, which is what this is. You also put on me as Frederick County, uh, a rain tax that says, you have to pay for this by putting a new tax on people or fee as they call it.
I'm sorry, you said rain tax, go ahead.
So there, there, so what Frederick County said is, I have no choice but to follow the stormwater management permit side of it. But I disagree with you dictating how I should pay for it, and therefore I'm gonna snub you by making a one penny tax. So there's the revenue side, which when, when you talk rain tax, you talk revenue. When you talk stormwater management, you talk expense.
So how is Frederick paying for their?
Hey guys, Bob's been, Bob's been waiting here.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna jump in on this, okay? We are involved in a tax equity program from Carroll County, they call it something else, and Frederick County. Out of Frederick County, this year is four hundred twenty-eight thousand, last year was four hundred fifty-eight thousand, the year before that was four hundred seventy-eight thousand. Okay, so it's dropping a little bit, but we basically get half a million dollars out of Frederick County for being double taxed for forty percent of our population, okay? Out of Carroll County. Last year we got a hundred nine thousand, this year we're getting a hundred nine thousand minus the sixty-seven thousand, that's our first payment on the rain tax in Carroll County.
So Frederick is actually kicking in a lot more money, it's just a different way of looking at it.
Exactly. Okay, so we're not getting hosed by Frederick County to as much as everybody thinks we are.
Right, that's what she's thinking.
But just to qualify Carroll County, they also pay for the library, they put a couple hundred thousand dollars towards fire department, blah, 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 blah.
I understand.
Maybe not a hundred thousand, but they put other expenses, but it's not as bad as, it's not as bad as it sounds, right.
Correct. Correct. It's not as bad as it sounds, right.
Good point.
And also put up.
On either way.
However, Frederick County puts in more money, but however, not a single penny of that money represents any offset for stormwater management. Not a penny. Right.
All right, so let me cut to the chase.
Well, that's because they don't tax for that.
Let, let me.
Yes, they do. It comes out of the general funds.
Let me, let me cut to the chase again then.
Which is what we used to do.
Have we discussed any short or long-term mechanisms to avoid spending eight hundred thousand dollars in a town of our side?
With Frederick County?
Yeah.
We've met with the representative from Frederick County and she couldn't provide a solution for us at all. In fact, none of the towns in Frederick County are doing anything.
Right.
Why are we?
They're just, they're just, they're just fixing it, doing what they need to do.
They're under, they're under a separate permit than Frederick County, and those municipalities face the same problem of having to remediate twenty percent of their impervious surfaces at their own expense.
Well, I, I got it, but if, Monica, if they're, if the other municipalities aren't doing it, because they simply can't afford to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's part of it, like, like.
Then why are, why aren't we doing the same thing on the Frederick side? We can't afford this, guys.
Because, because we have a permit requirement from MDE, and they're gonna be in violation of the permit requirement if they can't do it.
I, I don't care what we're in violation of, if you ain't got the money, you have the money.
We have luck. We're, we're not under a separate permit for our Frederick County side. Our entire town is under that one permit that we parked.
Understood, so why don't, why don't we, we're talking eight hundred thousand dollars, sorry, hold on, hold on. Why don't we split, why don't we split our permit?
And. One, one thing.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, it's almost a million bucks.
There's no way we split the permit, we're phase one. The reason those, the reason those split the permit is the fact that the amount of remediation work you have to do in stormwater management is the same. Twenty percent of your impervious surface within the Frederick County side, twenty percent within Carroll County side. The reason for putting the permits together, uh, putting all of that area under one permit, is the fact that Carroll County will supply us free of charge.
Unless they're meant to.
Services of administrative, they will cover all of our funding requirements to the state, uh, for stormwater remediation, so we get benefits out of it.
For Carroll County.
By combining the two without any additional requirements.
Got it.
Yeah, they're gonna help us with our Frederick County project too. They'll, all the administrative.
Yeah, they will.
Okay. Last, got it, last question. Why don't we just go buy some green space on the Frederick County side cheap and reduce? Can we, have we run the numbers and said, if we go buy a hundred acres on the Frederick County side, which is all open and green for?
Can we then reduce our footprint?
And I'll make numbers up. Say we get a hundred acres and I'm making it all up, a hundred acres for a hundred thousand dollars. Hey, guess what? Our rain ta- I'm calling it rain tax, our rain tax now goes from eight hundred to two hundred. We've A, acquired more potential park rec space for our kids, and B, we saved a whole bolo of money.
No, because, because it's twenty percent of your impervious surface.
Wrong answer.
But you still have the facilities.
My point, my.
His key is if we, if we, if we substantially increase our impervious surface.
And that's the bottom line. The bottom line is.
Uh, our pervy, if we increase our pervious surface, doesn't it change the percentage?
Exactly. The bottom line is that, that stormwater management pond in Twin Ridge has to be fixed. It's not up to federal, state.
Okay.
No.
Oh, I'm not questioning that. I kinda see what Chris was getting at, so in other words, that twenty percent doesn't change even if the town grows?
It has to change.
If, if, if you were to pay, pay more.
No, we're paving more. We're getting green land.
We're not talking paving.
You could, you could.
Our impervious surface is still our impervious surface, is what I'm saying.
Twenty percent, Pat.
It does not change the number of acres that you need to mediate. We still have, Frederick, or Carroll County has sixty-eight, eight, sixty-eight acres of impervious surfaces here, and Frederick has twenty acres. No, 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 listen.
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Okay, and, and you can add acres and acres and acres. You still have to remediate for that twenty acres of impervious surface.
Add that impervious, impervious surface.
You've got to.
So, so you, then you're gonna have.
It's not a percentage.
A hundred thousand or.
If it was a percentage, your idea would be great.
It's not a gross, it's not a gross percentage, it's twenty percent of the concrete.
Gross percentage.
That's right, twenty percent of the concrete.
I got you, I got you, yeah. I was thinking like Chris that it was a percentage of our actual surface, and if we increased, and if we increased our green space, that our, how much of that we had would be a smaller percentage.
Value, the value in the whole town remaining under phase one is the fact that Carroll County will handle all the administration.
Which saves us a lot.
All we'll have to do is write the check.
All right, and, and guys, anything else on streets and roads?
Just the curbs, Barney, on the curbs, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, now, is that part of, uh, East Ridgeville or we don't?
That's the East Ridgeville and Main Street.
We're pulling East Ridgeville and Main Street from this year's budget and putting it next, because apparently it, uh, we're gonna need some consultant money. That was, project was a little different than Barney thought, so we're gonna do the consultant work this year, and we're gonna pay Main Street for the safety of the children before the next school year starts in August. It'll be next year in August. Then we'll do East Ridgeville Boulevard where the masons are opening up their, uh, facility.
Oh, yeah, they bought the church up there.
And it's gonna be issued, have a sidewalk, and that's, it's gonna go in this year or go in later, but sidewalks for the kids will be in before the next school year.
But if you do.
But.
But if you do the consulting work, that's gonna kill this hundred and seventy-five thousand, right?
Well, the consulting work is a hundred and seventy-five.
We beat, this is the one we beat to death.
Yeah, yeah, hey guys, Chris, Chris is asking a good question. Is this the one?
Mayor. This is the one we beat to death.
Is this the one that we, we talked about where we're gonna talk to the homeowners?
Right.
Okay.
So this is on hold, the, budget the money, but let's see.
We're budgeting the money, but it, it could go away, I suppose, if all the homeowners scream.
Of the homeowners, yeah, there's no chance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the process when it be doing.
Right, right, but we're, we're budgeting the money, but it could.
They do a lot of walking. They do a lot of walking over there, they're probably.
Yeah, I, I think they will. I think we're most of them.
And I know the school kids, Mary, that's against the sidewalk.
Any, anything else on, uh, streets and roads?
Her neighbor wanted them a year, three years ago.
Yeah, she doesn't.
All right, Charlene, now let's jump to the next one.
Um, be parks, start with park open space.
Before we go, Ken, was there sidewalks that you felt to be, to be addressed this year? Is that the ones you were thinking of?
Yeah.
Well, I was, well, I've been. Well, I've just talked to Barney over the last couple of years about, we've done all the work on, uh, Main Street, on South Main Street here, and, uh, to get handicap, uh, uh, people down there now, we still can't use it because we can't get by the poles, so. My suggestion was that sometime or another we should fix it so you can use it, uh, the sidewalks.
You mean?
No, no, uh, well, you can go around the poles.
With the little concrete, uh.
Of the little, yeah, yeah. It works some places, but some places there's absolutely no space.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we have to work.
Now, we need the time, sir, if you're interested in making this.
Yeah.
Well, I'm interested, I've been interested in it.
Can we put an asterisk and, uh, Ken and Barney can come up with a proposal before we close the budget out for sidewalks for the council?
It might be too late to do a proposal on that, because I don't know what it costs.
You may wanna, you may wanna work that for next year.
Or you could do a budget amendment.
Well, what I'm, my, my suggestion was if it's seventy thousand dollars, can't use here, make it transferred and do what you can with seventy thousand out there.
Yeah. Well, I'd, I'd say good, I would say talk that over with the commission.
Yeah.
And Scott's got something.
I do. So, I just wanna clarify one point, regardless if we have extra money or not. Um, we ended up approving a concept at Monday's meeting for the caboose.
Correct.
There was a lot of infrastructure changes that I saw there with regards to the parking lot, handicap spots, et cetera. Has that been budgeted?
I thought, I think that's, that's the developer doing that.
Yeah, it's Rob Scranton is going to.
He's paying for all the outskirts.
It's his, it's all his property.
It's his land.
He's, he's going to take care of that, to my understanding, he's going to pay for all of our.
But I think we also have so many under ninety-two thousand that we budgeted to cover some of that, like Barney, Melissa.
How, how?
I don't think so.
Yeah, but I think we're coming in under.
It's private property, so he, he's gonna cover it, because it's private property. We can't, this is a good question, but it's private property.
Yeah, exactly.
Melissa, you know anything?
We had, we were looking at putting, funding in for next year, but, um, we might have money in this year's budget if we need to cover the costs of the land tract.
Do you, do you need to see ten thousand dollars towards that this year?
For, for this coming year?
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, now's the time to approach the council.
I would say yes to be saved for, um, for like an awning or something over the caboose, but I, actually.
For an awning. To protect our investment.
We might be able to get such services donated out of the house and, but.
How do we do, how do we do that on private?
Well, the caboose is gonna be telling us.
Yeah, the caboose will be ours, even if it sits on private property.
We're trying to protect the caboose.
So we're trying to.
Valid point, Chris.
We're trying to protect town assets, to Scott's point.
That could be, your caution is well taken.
So if it's an awning. I would, I would make a suggestion for the awning part, which is great, as you said, um, that we look at that if there's additional funding and it's ten K or whatever for an awning price, just a budget.
Put a note.
And it's not some, it's also not something that we need right away. I mean, he said something down the line, we probably ought to look at that.
No, but it's budgeted.
Put it in the budget and put a note, so I know six months from now, when we go to spend it, what it's for.
I'm with Scott.
So put an asterisk, ten thousand to protect town assets.
Yeah.
At, at train.
Yeah, that's a good call.
Ten thousand to protect train.
We're talking about the preparation of the area. Well, they were hoping.
Yeah. Well, no.
We're talking about an awning.
He's not, he's not showing an awning in the final, the final area they get.
Butter, they thinking about awning later?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They have.
Larry presented it, you were wrong.
Okay, guys, I said, let's.
Yeah, the awning will be necessary to protect any water from coming down through the.
Because that's something that Larry ended up presenting up, when they not.
That's, that's, that's right.
They will end up eventually destroying the.
But he doesn't show that on his.
Well, they do have money in this current year's budget that they can reallocate that they're not using.
That will cover the awning?
Yes, if it can be done before June thirtieth.
Which ain't gonna happen.
Well, I may not.
It will happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it, it might happen, because the things are coming back.
Land water next year.
Yeah, yeah, but the awning can't go up till, till after the, the caboose is there, because they have to crane it down, I think, so it's gotta, you can't crane it under the awning.
So my recommendation would be put a placeholder in there for improvement to the caboose, or whatever.
Well, awning, awning, same thing.
Well, what if, I, I would, whatever actually they need.
Because what if, what if we also talked, and this is something else, about staffing it, they talk about volunteers, but is there some additional cost to having it?
See, that's why this was a council decision, because it's an ongoing cost issue.
So just, the awning, uh, again, the, for the.
Like a motion, oh, you have to walk this part.
So, so, the, the, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I, we shouldn't be spending money, town money, on private property, except in this particular case, we're spending money for an awning to protect.
It's all a council issue.
Our asset.
Town asset.
We're not improving the rest of the property, we're protecting just our asset.
That's truly cool to say.
Yeah.
I, I, but, but I think.
Yeah, I mean, we need to protect, we, we will own the caboose and we need to protect the caboose.
Correct.
Right, so I think that everybody's, so Scott's.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna cover our caboose?
I've got some recommendations, is that I would, I would put ten K in there right now, and if we're at the end over ten K, then great, we'll come back and revisit.
From adding a.
Is that okay?
Sure.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's a good, good catch. You can, you're s- you're sitting there thinking about more jokes on that one, but we should leave that one alone.
No, I'm telling you actually.
Didn't you like it better when the councils was fighting each other?
Where did that ten thousand, what line is that going on on?
That is under, uh, program open space. It's about, um, two-thirds of the way down. It says visitor center, train caboose.
Okay, I see it.
And there are three projects in this, um, line item that are depending on POS brand approval.
Eight's three, capital improvement budget. Just for everybody following along.
Wait, we jumped to Parks and Recs all of a sudden?
Yes.
Right, because that's where the line item was to add for money.
Sorry, all right, so we left streets and roads, all right, sorry.
I think nobody else.
Oh, yeah, I see it, visitor center caboose, all right.
And those three projects, um, under POS are, were applied for with community parks and playground grant. Those were projects that the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, had in their out years. Um, and it was, it's the Carroll County term to, to get funding over two years, um, down area gets selected, and the out years were, were seen as the other four towns in Carroll I looked at. So it was really important to apply for a project, um, and that was selected was the eighty-eight playground. So, um, only if we do get awarded, that will cover ninety percent of the project cost if we get the reimbursement, but I decided, um, to just make it, either we get it and we do it or we don't.
Okay, so we don't spend this money unless we get our grant, get the, the funding, all right.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, Peter, I'm now lost, I mean, I'm looking at.
These two things right here, uh, these are on the program open space.
Got it. All right, I got the.
So if we get the program open space grants, then we'll spend this money to be our portion of it. If we don't get the grants this year, then we won't spend that money, because.
All right, can we, can we go back to, can we go back to the line item? Again, Parks and Recs, the line item, visitor center, train caboose.
Gotcha.
Uh, oh, propose, so for, we have nothing proposed for.
Right, it's one of the two thousand.
Okay, all right.
So I said, one of the three is ten thousand.
That's a ten K, sorry, we jumped, got it, thank you.
And that's an assumption that, that's enough for an awning.
Right, what is that, what is that, ninety?
Yeah, that, that was, yeah, I was staying, yeah.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the total.
Somebody was gonna get added, the cover's gonna get added right there.
Caboose. Right, thank you.
Well, it's gonna be pre, pre standing, wouldn't it?
All right, Charlene, you walk us through this. Keep moving us forward.
Okay, well then the next line item is, uh, mobile equipment capital purchases, and we have a tractor scheduled for next year. Any questions on that? We can ask Brian. Any questions?
Brian, we can get, we have money to get sandblasters this year.
Well, I'm not hearing any questions, let's keep on moving.
Okay, then, park projects and play equipment. We're doing, uh, basketball rehab at East West Park. A total grounds and dock upgrade at Prospect Park, and we're going to partner with the Frederick County Public Schools for a track at Twin Ridge Elementary. Any questions for Brian there?
Not hearing any. Let's go.
Okay. Moving on. We are budgeting three hundred and fifty thousand for the, um, purchase of easement or land, uh, which is, um, offset by a three hundred twenty-one thousand dollar grant from Frederick County for land purchases.
So if we spend that money, we get it all back.
Well, three hundred twenty-one thousand of it.
Yeah, three hundred twenty-one of the three fifty.
And that's, that's for this year or next year? For next year?
Well, we had it in this year's budget and it's not gonna happen this year, they're still working on it.
So if we don't buy land for three hundred and twenty thou- three hundred and fifty thousand, we're leaving money on the table?
Yeah, we don't, we don't use it, we don't.
And other towns will.
Is this, is this, is this geared towards CSX?
No, well, it could be.
Okay. Right.
We, the, the town really needs to move forward, um, with deciding what program will be for this money.
Can we, can we ask for a closed meeting to discuss that at the next?
Land acquisition.
Yeah.
Well, we're not discussing, we're just, you know, I don't think she's discussing anything in that detail.
I think it'll be next, next, no, it's next meeting, so we can't discuss in detail, so we're leaving this money on the table.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this money was originally for Bill Moxley's fourth class.
Yeah.
I remember that, gotcha.
We are fortunate that we still have it within our reach, I, I would caution the council that we need.
Frederick County would like to see us do something.
But my, right, right, but my, my understanding was we were holding this because we're talking with CSX right now, we're just gonna meet with them the next month or two.
But that could be CXX, or it could be, there's another piece of progress, I believe, sits on the Frederick, is that Howard County?
So, I, I think, so the.
There is Frederick County property.
This has to be Frederick, right.
It has to be Frederick.
Yeah.
And there is an opportunity for that, I would caution you not to necessarily wait for CSX.
Okay.
We need to imagine for a.
Can we discuss that at the Wisconsin meeting?
Sure.
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition, closed meeting.
Debbie, next council meeting.
Okay.
Land acquisition, closed meeting.
If Heather could be there?
Yes.
Certainly.
You just condemned yourself to a late night, Heather, that's election night, you know, you're, that's gonna be really late. That's election night, so we don't start till like.
You actually could, you actually could.
No, no, they have to be at the polls.
Dick?
Not necessarily.
Can you add to that, uh, land acquisition, the, uh, possibly requiring land for future, uh, well development?
Ooh, no, I, I say no, I'm not interested.
Well, it could be in a order too, where I'm just gonna say, if you're hav- having a meeting about land acquisition.
Larry, were your ears burning? We just got off the train.
I'll, I'll also question since Larry's here, maybe he knows, have you done any preliminary looking at an awning, like what?
The cost.
Average cost would be a wrong?
For Mackenzie.
Uh, no, I have not looked at the cost, it's very dependent on if we, uh, there's three I beams that are over where the billboard is, it could be incorporated into an awning, so.
Can we attach to a private structure though, that was a discussion we had.
They put in ten thousand for your awning.
Sounds fair.
I just didn't know if it was enough.
It'll get us on the way, cause, uh, I mean, we're, we're still under it, so.
Okay, but we're probably gonna cut, uh, the arts budget, just kidding.
So Dick's got, Dick's got wire. So, Di- I think, Dick.
Uh, Dick's brought it to the table and I agree with him, I think we ought to look at somewhere, in some piece of property for a future water.
Alright, I, and I, I completely disagree, I do not believe we should be using taxpayers' funds to go out and acquire additional water for more development, right now, we've got the water that we need for infill.
We don't, yeah.
Commercial, we, we have wat- if you have a plot in town, you have water.
Not until we get Harrison Lashir.
No, 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 right now.
I actually will.
So you think we'll actually get there?
I will, well, I'm not regardless Harrison Leager, I totally agree with Councilman Evers on this, and the councilman that I nominated, and I certainly support a hundred percent, I may see that differently.
Does that, no, no, does that, does that number, does that include our, our, our commercial and everything down here?
Let me be clear, and, and I'll, I'll stick it, Bob, Bob does the counterpoint, if you have an infill lot, you have water, we are not short of water. Now, if you wanna do something new, brand new, a brand new project, okay, we, right now have twenty, we have forty thousand da- forty thousand gallons left for a new commercial project, we'll, if we release another twenty, we'll have sixty, but my, my, my point is, and, and, my point is, and I'm absolutely adamant about this, is we not expend taxpayers' funds to go get more water, if somebody needs more water, developer comes in, fine, then go ahead and let them buy it.
Say one of our wells goes down for some reason, will we have enough water?
Yes, can I answer that, and I'm not even the water girl.
No, you can't talk anymore.
It's not a matter of how much, it's a matter of what MDA will allow us to pump out of the well, if three of our wells go down, they'll allow us to pump more out of the other wells.
Okay.
To meet that overall standard, so when people say if a well fails, that's okay, let three of them fail, they'll give us a, a larger.
They'll increase our allotment.
We have more water underneath of us, they're not letting us take it.
Right, exactly.
They're capping us, so even if we find more, they're capping us, now to Barney's point and to Bob's point, where I may switch my support, do we have enough water, even with the twenty, twenty, twenty to build out Center Street in a decent fashion?
It's hard to say, depends on what goes in there, um, but, uh, you can go a long way with the sixty thousand, yes.
Okay, so we may need a moderate source.
What about a couple, how about a couple restaurants, those are pretty high users, right, couple restaurants with that?
Yeah, but I mean, that might be about five thousand of them.
Okay.
So it's, that's my point, if, if we couldn't do Center Street, you got, but if we have enough to build out Center Street, I do not think we should be supplying water sources for development if the community doesn't.
We're not, and we're not talking about bringing that water in, we're not talk, all we're doing is talking about buying a water source and holding on to it in our pocket.
But why would we spend taxpayers' money to do that?
I mean, because, because when the sixty thousand gallons is allocated to whatever it is, within the town limits, there is still sufficient property within the town limits that would not be able to get any water.
Uh, it, I disagree.
Name it, name it, every plotted lot has water, that's the point he just made.
Every plotted lot is guaranteed water, but if you, if every lot was built out, would you concede your MDE permit? And the answer is?
The way it's currently zoned, it should be no, we have.
The answer is yes.
Well, didn't we have a consent agreement where we had to prove we had water for every lot in town?
That's only things that are already approved products.
Right, that's pipeline.
That's not for your vacant land.
So this is a valid question, do we have lots?
That's what I was understanding, yes, what they're saying was my understanding, that we're short.
Everything out, commercial, uh, industrial, even if you don't even look at the residential in town, we do not have enough money to build everything out. We could go a long way along Center Street downtown, with that sixty thousand.
Okay, so.
But eventually, you're gonna reach the wall where you have no more, you're, you're pumping what MDE allows and you have no more.
So maybe, this is a broader discussion which perhaps have, so when you say build everything out, what does that mean, everything that's already in the town?
Every vacant land, tight property, um, fire grounds, uh, four back.
Well, 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 hold on, listen to what we're adding, come on, wait, wait, stop, so, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be rude, I'm, I'm not, right, understood, not trying to be rude, sorry. We're asking the same question, we're getting different answers, number one, eh, yes or no, sorry, every plotted lot in town, does it currently have the EDUs based on its zoning, yes or no?
Yes.
Oh, okay, are, it's a, hold, no, please, wait, but.
It has white to water.
Wait, stop, um, every plotted lot in town, according to its zoning, does, do we have water right now to serve it? As it's currently zoned, yes or no?
For the entire town, no.
No, definitely not.
No.
Then, wait a minute, then why are we putting, I don't get, get the Heather, then, cause, why are, why do, why are we putting the, the sixty thousand gallons out for consumption, the twenty, twenty, twenty thing, if?
Because that gives you a portion of it, um, to, to plot everything out, our estimate.
Now, that makes sense, you're putting the sixty, sixty out towards commercial downtown.
Cause you wanna make sure it doesn't all get sucked up by houses.
Yeah, you're putting that out first, where you should be.
Do Center Street, that's how you.
That's how you can do Center Street.
Heather's been waiting for a long time. She, she, she defers to Barney.
Right now, we have nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons a day, uh, per minute of water that we can draw out of the ground, of our eleven wells. Um, to, to build everything out of our vacant land in town, the estimate gets us to somewhere close to our treatment plant.
That's what I was wondering, if we got more water.
So that tells you, you need about two hundred and seventy thousand to build everything out.
What do you mean by build everything out?
That's, well, that's build every lot as zoned.
You build every lot as zoned, which is fair.
Yeah, right, as zoned. As zoned, if somebody comes in and says, I wanna build this, I'm complying with every single rule, I'm complying with the zoning, and I would like to build.
I want my EDUs.
Are we, are we?
Should we as a town be able to provide the infrastructure that could allow that to happen, namely, and what this does is, after the sixty thousand runs out, if, if you own property that can produce a reasonable amount of water, you don't develop it now. This is for the future, this is so that when you run out of the sixty thousand, the council isn't sitting here and saying, I can't get any more water, because you can't.
How many, how many undeveloped lots do we have?
We haven't, we don't, we, no, we have an inventory of all that, I've seen, I've seen it all.
Why don't you use one as an example, Hank's property, industrial, this, this is a broader question, if he wants to develop it, can he develop that as industrial?
One EDU.
That's all he gets, so he cannot develop it as industrial.
He would need additional EDUs.
He would, so that's, so. Let's think about that for a minute, is the town obligated to provide him that as we would with the new annexation, or is he obligated to find his own water source?
I think we're obligated to provide him with water, he's in town.
If, if, this is, this is, this is the way Dick and I look at this.
You don't permit the well drilling within the town limits, you can't drill a well, where is he gonna get the water?
No, 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 he can do a test well, uh, to see if he can.
And see if he can give it to us, right, yes.
Be turned over to the town.
Who's responsibilities, and his or ours, that's what I'm asking, if it's ours, then we need a ton of water sources.
I think so.
We do have a statement that says developing is, I know we do with annexations, what about that particular property is the question.
But if he drills that well, where we've already used up our credits from MDE, MDE is not gonna approve pumping water out of that well.
That's true, that's right, cause, cause he, we've, we're already taken out of that aquifer, that aquifer's drained, we, he can't drill.
Because your recharge, the way they compute the amount of water you can draw out of the ground is based on a formula.
Yeah.
The formula very roughly, correct me if I'm wrong, says, for every acre you had, you could take three hundred gallons. Well, if you have, we're, we're, we're maxed out in certain of our four quadrants that we have to deploy. And one of the quadrants that has the most water cranes available is where there's very little water. See, he can't drill a well there and come in and say, I drilled all the well, I, well, he's gonna come in and say, I've got a well that's gonna produce five, ten, ten, fifteen thousand gallons, you know, so I'm bringing the water into you, are you gonna put a million dollars in me when you well?
No.
Can, can we pose a question to Tom, the attorney, to say, are we obligated providing water, cause that kinda answers the water question?
Did.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't answer it for me, we have, we have an obligation to provide to the people all of these services, okay, and, and it's your, it's your, your trash and recycling, your, your water, your sewer, um.
But is development a right?
I'm not.
On property that's in town, that's zoned, yeah, I think.
No one's answered, nobody's still answered my fundamental question, alright, how many, uh, eh, put it this way.
Good discussion.
The, flag the number, the next council meeting, show us.
There are two council meetings from now.
Show us, show us how many lots, show us how many lots, how many lots in town are yet undeveloped.
But I'm a bug.
Show. It's in there.
And that's fine, I'll offer Tom.
I've, I've seen that, I've seen that.
Hold on, hold on, please, if we can't, hold, hold on, if we can't obtain, if we can't easily obtain that, Houston, we got a problem because we're not dealing with real numbers here, so just, just follow.
They've got the numbers, they'll get the numbers.
Okay, so, please show us, show us how many undeveloped lots we have. How many undeveloped lots we have, okay, how much water is allocated to each lot, and it's based on zoning category?
Allocation and having are two different things. Not the same as having it.
We do not allocate water until such time that the plan comes before the planning commission and they actually approve a water allocation, so let's just not use allocation. By right, every recorded lot of record, Barney, throw something at me if I'm off track, um, every lot of record within town, we are obligated to give them one EDU. Residential is two hundred and fifty gallons per day, commercial is essentially three hundred and fifty gallons per day.
So, please.
What, wait, let me, please.
Let her finish.
Heather has the floor, sorry.
Thank you, wait, I know, I do the same thing, um, our MGE of the master plan that we just adopted, we have a chart of the vacant land inventory and the anticipated water usage based on the, the, um, future land use designation, obligation, I'm, I'm not equipped to answer that. What I would ask everybody to step back and remember when we went through the master plan process, we had a overall vision of how we wanted the future development of a town to occur. We're boasting economic development, it's going to take water, it's going to take gallons per day to achieve that vision, it's not gonna happen in five years, this is long range, this is twenty to thirty years. What Barney alluded to, the available water capacity right now, will not support the envisioned development in the adopted master plan. I don't have the right to call when you, but.
Yeah, Heather?
I answered that just one bit, which, the bottom line is, that if you believe in the master plan at all, then you have to go ahead five years or seven years, so you have the water available to meet the vision of the master plan, and bottom line is, I think you'd agree, right now today, you have to say, the water is not available to meet the, that, the vision of the master plan, and I would say it's time to start planning for that long-term future, so we don't really run into panic city when somebody wants to build money.
I would caution, I know, but I would, just because we find water, it doesn't mean.
We have to build houses.
That, that you, you remember, look at the water allocation ordinance that you guys just passed, that is such an amazing toll. That is where you're going to target the growth, you don't have to allocate it to any place.
Scott, come on, we gotta let Scott go, come on, Scott.
Oh my god, well, I'm not done yet, I'm.
Okay, Scott and Heather are gonna wrestle now.
I am bending the microphone.
Because, because, because I will support Heather with the statement, we have something called.
Well, put your microphone down then.
Yeah, cause they, they do need to hear this.
We have something called the WRE, that we ended up working on, that drafts out the plan of how we could end up getting water to end up meeting the plan, and what we have available currently, the shortages that we have to get to the master plan, so I would suggest everybody look at the WRE. The fact is, we don't.
Stands for Water Resources Element, Councilman Strong.
Has to be in line with the master plan, as well as the municipal growth element, MGE document, all three of those documents are sent to the county and signed off on. Therefore, we, we don't have the water, so, to answer the question, we just don't have it right now.
Mister Ray?
Should this be for another time, this is our question.
We, we, I, we could, let me just real quickly, so, God, you said, to, to the point, we're obligated to provide one EDU by the plan, we can be totally consistent with the water resource element, we can be totally consistent on our master plan, the question here lies in who pays for that water, Councilman Evers' point was, we don't pay for it, yeah, somebody should pay for it, somebody should get it, it should be there, but should it be on the backs of the taxpayers' amount area to make sure developer A can develop his partial as commercial, he can have the water, he needs to get the water.
I'm, and I'm sorry, I, my, my words came out before you finished, I apologize.
That's impossible.
I would direct the council to explore the monies that have been collected from developers.
It's been deleted, it has been explored, that money has been used over and over again, didn't we talk about that several times?
We have no more money in well exploration?
Yeah, we do.
No, but, but people talk about that with developers been paying in over years, it's my understanding that all the expenses that we've paid out over the course of the last twenty, thirty years, more than cover that money that we received in from development. Yes, the impact.
I mean, but that money in that reserve account can't be spent for anything else.
Well, I, I understand, but we've, we've pulled out, so developers have gotten their money back, as far as.
And, and I'm, I'm, by no means suggesting that, Mayor, I, I apologize if it came across that way, but, and to Councilman Evers' point, if there's money put into the budget that would be covered by tax revenue, absolutely. If there are reserves that have been built up by development fees, then that's perhaps.
Appropriate, agree.
But not based on tax revenue, just.
Chris?
So I'll, I'll, I'll concede Dick's point, Bob's point, and Heather's point, I'll concede the point. I still will not vote for any money for land exploration for wells until such a time as the Harrison Lashir issue has run its course.
That I understand.
At this moment in time, I, I got the floor, we did, I got the floor, at this moment in time, the town has entered into good faith negotiation, good faith agreements, well, we haven't signed an agreement, we're currently in a good faith negotiation with the county, Harrison Lashir, in fact, we had a, I had a meeting this after, afternoon about that, until there's a, there's a well out there, Barney nominated, a hundred and twenty thousand gallons?
We get ninety of it, we get ninety, ninety, I thought ninety, eighty, ninety.
Okay, what, whatever, there is a hundred and ten thousand gallons out there, why would we spend any money looking for a source outside of that if we're currently engaged in good faith negotiations with the county, if the citizens decide that they don't wanna annex that town, then, then I agree with Dick, I won't.
Well, let's, let's go to Dick, but I, but I think Ken is right, this may not be the place for this discussion.
This is a whole new bargain, this is not a.
Yeah, Bob, I do wanna know more about the case, cause if, if we have money.
Dick?
I would simply say that the Harris Lashir, if you would swing, swimmingly, you've got your hundred and ten thousand, you're still a hundred and fifty thousand short. In other words, the point here is, does this council want to look down the road, and I would say five to seven years, and, and have a source of water that can be developed at that time if necessary? Or do we wanna gamble on the fact that five to seven years, the council doesn't sit here and say, we're out of water and we have no way of bringing additional water online, regardless of who pays for it. And by the way, this is only due to land acquisition, this is an investment in the future for the possibility of, of increasing the amount of water, and I would suggest that that purchase be in the area where we already have credits available, that we can apply against any wells that come down the line four, five, six years later. You are doing a service for the future council members this way, you're making an investment in the future, you're looking at some needs of, of today and potential, uh, business owners, residents, taxpayers, because the last thing you wanna do, I think, is fall back to where we were when we didn't have enough water and the state came down on us rather heavily, and, and we don't wanna be in panic city when somebody comes in and wants to make a, a, a development, commercial in nature, that we desperately need and we say, sorry, five years ago, we, we decided we weren't gonna do that.
But, I, I.
Hey, guys, let's, let's, let's try and.
Can I ask one thing?
What are planning?
And I hate, I hate doing this, I hate doing this worse than anything in the world, is there consensus on this council to talk about this and, and, and try to solve, try to solve something, is there consensus?
I don't think this is time to even bring a consensus up here.
I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm not talking about.
Sure, we can talk about it.
Oh, I, I wanna sit down with you and Dick, cause I think Chris and I are on the opposite sides, and I wanna understand your views.
So it's, yeah, I think we, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna talk about it.
I'd love to talk.
I think we need to do something.
Conversation I think we need to have.
Good conversation to have.
But, but not now.
Okay.
Which means we don't put money in the budget.
It's already there.
You can always amend the budget.
It's already there, isn't it?
It's not.
No, it's not, it's not.
What's the three hundred thousand dollars for there? What's the three hundred thousand dollars for then?
Yeah, but it could be for that.
Flag it, we can have a conversation.
Right, I mean, why could it not be for that?
That's what you're going for.
I wanna, I wanna learn, I wanna see your point, I mean, I agree, but I wanna hear your point.
Heather's giving me the evil eye, why couldn't I, is there some reason why we couldn't buy a piece of ground with that money that maybe we'd put a well on someday?
If it's associated with park land, certainly.
Well, whatever we get, we're gonna put a park on, that's the way we do things.
That's a program open space.
Right.
The, the council could certainly explore that and, but there's certain quadrants of the town that we're closed off from.
That's right.
Correct.
It's only Frederick County, if we did.
And Frederick County's, we can't, they won't let us drill anymore wells over there. Our main well field is.
Well, one time we looked at, at land further out in Frederick County that was on the other side of like.
It's not continued.
In a different, a different aquifer?
No, it's the same watershed, they won't let us take it out.
Unless we greatly, that's right, we have to greatly increase our, our, um. Our recharge, yeah, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
I, I feel good, at least we, we got consideration here, thank you.
Where was Chris?
He's out messing with Bob's car, right?
He's going to the well.
Yeah, he's going to the well, he's recharging.
Okay, Charlene, where do you wanna go next?
So, are we done with Parks Capital, are there any questions?
Yes, I think we're done with Parks Capital.
Okay, well, Mary Hushour is here now, if you would like to ask her any questions about beautification.
Okay, all right, Mary, so, since you just walked in, um, the, let's start the Inquisition of Mary. We, there, there were questions about beautification and things like that.
Yeah, I was gonna offer you one of mine, since, you know.
Hey, Bob, can you, Bob, how about throwing some down this way? Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Melissa waving the town flag back there.
Could I just do a quick primer? Uh, Mary, as a quick primer, what you did miss, one of the concerns is, one, our, our money towards the arts has went up substantially, usually we make increases, we try to do it incrementally, depending on what the issue is. Another issue was raised that, uh, this is not a town organization and should we be in the business of funding a non-town organization? With that being said, before your heart gets broken, the thought was brought up that perhaps, uh, 'cause there's no, there's no real accountability for the taxpayers in Mount Airy when we're giving money to a private organization, that if we bought that under the umbrella of, say, Parks and Recs or something like that, then it would fall underneath the county scrutiny and accountability, so perhaps. It'd be, well, be a bunch item either way, but it, it would, in fact, fall underneath the mandate required by the town and therefore could be a good use of taxpayers' fund, or at least be accountable under other accountability practices that we have for town commissions. So that's one of the things we, we were discussing, that, uh, it's, we're not opposed, Councilman Everidge, he's not opposed to it. But, since it's not a town thing, we may wanna put you under the umbrella.
No, um, I think that would be fine, I think put us under the scrutiny of Parks and Rec.
Well, they're, they're an advisory commission, so I, I don't wanna say the scrutiny, but working in conjunction with them, 'cause you'd actually fall underneath the executive side of the House, once you're budgeted by the council for scrutiny.
Well, for example, we're putting on a play in the park called The Invisible Driving Engine, and that money is coming from the town, um, from the last year's money that was there. And we're putting that on as a freebie for, um, for different performances to the town, we're not charging anything for it. So, I'm all for something like that, if we can, you know, partnership or piggyback with Parks and Rec. I think it's a win-win for everybody.
I think what Mary's saying is that there's no reason why an arts person shouldn't have come to Parks and Rec and proposed the play.
Definitely.
And have Parks and Recs make a motion and approve it.
But does the arts council remain as a private organization or becomes part of Parks and Rec?
We need to work that out.
There's, there's likely, I'm on it and Charlene.
But they don't, they don't approve, they can give, they can give advisory, except the town council will approve.
Exactly.
Your fund.
Yeah, we can say, right, right, and then it would have.
And then, I'll make sure it's administered correctly and it checks the balances or what.
Well, but if it's a line item, though, if it's already there and it's approved of the budget, isn't that already done? 'Cause I'm thinking about with beautification and things.
See, beautification falls, and that, Mary, is a good example.
Beautification falls under Parks and Rec.
But it's in that recreation and culture line, and that recreation and culture line is where Camp Night, uh, it's got ten thousand, three hundred.
I can't see that, I don't have my license.
Camp Night has a thousand. Is that?
That's, that's what it costs to put it on.
So are we okay if it falls under?
That entire line has ten thousand, three hundred.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, if I'm doing Camp Night, I go to the Parks and Rec board and I say, "I need, uh,
Do we have a name?
Three hundred dollars to pay for Slim, I need this much for food."
We can do that.
And, and Parks and Rec, we're both on.
Okay.
I think that by having the, uh, Mount Airy arts alliance under that line, they should fall under the same criteria.
Yes, but we're gonna reach out, they may, we're gonna reach out to our attorney and we'll come back to the council with a recommendation to make this legal. And let them fall, just 'cause they're under there doesn't mean, we'll reach out to our town attorney and see how we can put you under the umbrella. And that way you'll fall underneath the, the scrutiny that other commissions and other town expenditures fall under.
Yeah, and I don't think they're giving it argument.
No, not at all.
Good, so we're all gonna work together as we have been, she's gonna reach out to the town attorney and we'll make a recommendation back to the council.
Okay, well, the other question that came up was the actual dollars, so maybe you should ask about that.
I, I do have a separate question on that, but I forget my email, Mary, let's me and you talk offline and bring that back. I forget what, do you have the email? Oh, it's for the rent of the building. So, before, I don't know if the council was aware that we have been paying rent and I'm a, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that, without the council's approval. So here, it's out in the open, four thousand dollars, 'cause before it just wasn't spelled out, I wanted it spelled out, sometimes expenses as they go.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'd like to, myself, I'd like to reduce that figure for the rent.
Well, that's what we'd like to see.
I would like, um, honestly, the Arts Alliance has got to get to where they can stand on their own two feet as far as paying the rent and utilities. What I'd like is for the, um, town council to approve paying the rent for July through December of the remaining this year, two thousand and fifteen. And then after that, the Arts Alliance will have to pay for their own rent and their own utilities for their own space. Now, that being said, um, the programs, if we link in with the Parks and Rec, whatever Tom says, that, that's a whole separate deal. If we wanna give the people of Mount Airy a free concert series over here or in the park, or at Watkins Park, I think going under the umbrella, going to Parks and Rec and asking for it is the way to go, not only just because of the money, but because of the notoriety that everybody's gonna get and the exposure.
If, if I could, exactly right, I think we're very consistent, I, I do keep bringing this back. Parks and Recs does not approve. What I would like to see them doing, since we have their liaison here tonight, is I want them to look at this and see if it's a benefit to the citizens of Mount Airy. If what you're doing, you bring your proposal to Parks and Recs, they give a recommendation to town council if it's a benefit to the citizens of Mount Airy, and that's when town council makes a decision to fund or not to fund.
I'm fine with that, that's fine.
But let's be clear, their function, they're not approving, they're not an elected body. Town council will approve, they make the recommendation to town council, and what I would like for them to look at through their liaison is, is it a benefit to the citizens of Mount Airy? And, 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 you know, if you're bringing people into town and they're coming, great. If you're doing a show and we're getting five people and they're all the performers, it may not be best use of taxpayers' money. I support the arts, and if we can get it rolling, we've had it. If it's building, fine, if it's not building, we don't wanna put taxpayer money into it. But if it is building, bringing people in, let's do it, but I would rather Parks and Recs evaluate that.
Oh, that's just fine, I'm fine with that.
The only thing I wanted to say is that we did extensive studies, and this was you and I and Peter, and, and we down in Ocean City last year happened to run across a, a very different situation. Every time we talk to anybody that's in an arts alliance, an arts council, they are somehow involved with Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec's grandpa, and, you know, so, that, that's a good, it's a good place to be. And I just want the rest of the council to know that's a good place to be, and that's what historically.
Everybody's happy.
Oh, I think everyone's in agreement.
They make a recommendation, you get an official recommendation from a town commission, then you can make an informed decision, and then I can administer the money the way you direct.
Yeah, and, and then when you do it that way, I mean, the more I think about it, certainly governments, oh, we, governments fund nonprofits for cultural purposes. So you, you described a mechanism to put a control on it, it, we're funding a nonprofit and.
And to make sure it's to the benefit of the citizens before we just.
Right, and I, I think it's, it's less about standing on its own two feet and more about being a benefit to the citizens.
Yeah, I don't care if you can stay on your own two feet, I want it to benefit.
And that's, I mean, I know that's the goal.
Right, well, definitely, no, standing on their own feet means they need to pay for their rent and their electricity.
If they're a benefit, if they're, we have to weigh out the benefit, if they're a benefit.
It's like the skate park, the skate park was not designed to make a profit. The skate park is designed.
It never will.
Yeah, you won't, let's see if it's a benefit.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, okay, well, keep me posted.
But I have no problem with them trying to pay all their own bills.
Me neither, that's what I'm working on.
And, keep doing the good things y'all are doing.
Yeah, it's gonna be a great show, we've got, um, we're booked, we have plans all the way through December. This is the first year that I actually got a calendar out of everybody, and it took a marathon, five-hour meeting with musicians and another four-hour with the artists, so, I'm working hard.
And we thought, and we thought, and we thought the council went on too long.
Debbie, Debbie has a question.
Question. Um, when I talk to Tom, um, I need a little bit of guidance, are you thinking about the Arts Alliance actually becoming a commission, a separate commission, or falling as part of Parks?
Ask him, ask him, we want him under the umbrella.
And you still want them?
To where everything they do gets filtered through Parks and Recs or recommendations.
I think we're talking about setting up something like beautification.
Yes, we are.
Which now reports to Parks and Recs, a sub-commission.
But they're like a, right now, if I'm correct, and I might get married and do like.
I think they're a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
You are a pride out right now. No, we have our own, um, nonprofit, um, a 501 whatever, but, um, that was hard. With the paperwork and everything and taxes, so what we did is basically, I looked at, you know, basically like you guys do, the cost benefit, and what we're doing now is we're with the community foundation of Carroll County. We're a nonprofit with them right now.
Okay.
And they're helping with, um, you know, copies and, you know, art tax information, and that's whose tax exempt status that we use now.
Can I, so, can I?
We, under, um.
Not on their own, under them.
Not on their own, no.
But you did, you, you did receive a 501(c)(3) status.
Right, we did, but it's dormant.
Can I, can I suggest, can I suggest for accountability, for legal purposes, et cetera, et cetera, that, under this line item, that the council fund the Carroll, whatever, community.
Community Foundation of Carroll County.
With the understanding that they in turn fund you at the hundred percent. So, in other words, we, the council, is of course funding a nonprofit for cultural enhancement, and it's the Carroll group, and they give the money to you, so that way we have accountability.
But I don't know that we have to send them the money, we can, we can just pay the bills directly of the Arts Alliance.
I think what I need to do is I, and there, I'd like you to sit on a conference call with me, we'll call Tom.
Sure, sure, we'll figure it out, okay.
I agree with you.
This is a little.
It, it gets a little sticky for us.
We'll just pay their bills when they come in, the rent check comes in, we pay it.
I'm a machinist.
We don't have to go through a third party.
This is what it works.
But, but on paper, we're funding a nonprofit.
We have.
We should be on paper funding a nonprofit.
We have our 501(c)(3).
I don't care how the money moves.
Because, um.
I, I get what you're saying.
That's how it was originally set up.
That's how it was set up. When, um, when I was.
Yes, yes.
Having such success, the community foundation of Carroll County. I wanted to connect with them, and you're right now, 'cause we're still a fledgling organization, we've decided to let our own 501(c)(3) go dormant.
You actually have, yeah, I think that, the I N from the.
Yes, yes.
You can, and you can leave it dormant for three years before you, and so it's dormant right now.
And, and you get all this talk back and forth, I think there needs to be some conversation, but.
Well, Debbie just said we need to really have Tom sort this out for us.
Absolutely.
You don't wanna pay the bills through the town accounts, I, I mean, that's just not financially a good idea. My suggestion.
Why?
Huh?
Why?
Because then the Mount Airy Youth Athletics Association is gonna come to you and want more.
Why don't you write books for me, why don't you write, you know, every, and I'm.
Every nonprofit.
Well, we do the books for the beautification commission.
They're, they're a, they're a part, they're a part of a government, they're a government.
Right, but maybe we're, we're talking about actually maybe making them part of the government like beautification.
If they're not a body, they lose their 501(c)(3).
And maybe I need to reach out to Roberta with this.
Go back to my suggestion, find the easiest way to do it.
That, that, for the purpose of funding, that they approve the budget based on what you plan to do and that amount of money.
Yeah.
You set up your own checking account, and you run that money through that account, not through the community foundation under your own 501(c)(3) number. And by the way, you don't, I don't believe you need to be tied into their 501(c)(3) number. You can have your own and be a member up there.
Mm-hmm, you can, there's two funds, two types of funds.
So, so, so my suggestion would be to keep this segregated, um, that you, use your own 501(c)(3) to run your business operations, personally, I think it's the only way to.
Okay, well, they, I, I think they need.
That eliminates all this discussion.
Debbie, Debbie's got a question over here.
I think when I meet with Tom and talk to him, I think that's going.
And I also may feel, I feel like I need to call Roberta, if we're gonna get.
From a tax basis.
If we're gonna be paid, you know.
But I think, I think we've devi, I think we've deviated off tonight's task of the budget. So let's get back to this number.
Sorry?
We have sixty-eight hundred in there total, I guess ten-three total, which is made up of twenty-five hundred for movie night, we got a little more 'cause we're gonna get a, do a drive-in, we got a thousand for Camp Night, and we got sixty-eight hundred for the Arts Alliance. Anybody have any questions or issues on those numbers, just that portion of it? And we do think that the transmitter's gonna ultimately be the last.
Right, the other thing on the, um, the movies for the thing, I was just told that one of the speakers from the movie projector isn't working, so, money may. Huh?
I'll take yours.
Okay, Laura, fix that.
Yeah, I can't imagine that's a big a deal, my guess is it's just a wiring issue, the wiring for those things was always kinda.
I, I suggest you go ahead and fully fund as requested for the Arts Alliance, but I would like to see a review to see if it's a benefit.
All right, any, any, any other questions on those line items that we had flagged to come back to?
You don't have to spend it 'cause it's there.
Charlene's raising her hand.
I would just like to clarify our process, um, the budget is approved, and what the Arts Alliance is using this fiscal year was approved last fiscal year. Every single penny, Mary, um, comes to me with what they're gonna spend, what the plans are. I forward that to the mayor, he is informed for every expense, and then it goes through our approval process. So, I mean, it's all been done, our checks are payable to the Alliance, we do not pay the rent, we do not pay the electricity, we pay them for what they send us, um, that they're going to pay or have already.
But it does beg the question, 'cause we've had this situation before, if it's budgeted, do I have to expense it?
No.
Yeah?
It doesn't have to be.
We did, we had this discussion about the signs, and while I can't make sure all the Ts and Cross and the Is.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was, Tom's perspective was you could make sure everything was done right.
But I, I don't, I, if, if it's a council budget expense, I almost have to expend it, so, which I don't necessarily agree with, but I'm, the, the interpretation I heard so far would lean that way, I can tell you. So I would put an asterisk by, and say, subject to further review. Because that's, we look at that budget to say, subject, an asterisk, subject to further review, that'll give me the, uh, the flexibility to make sure that it's a recommendation.
Well, you could just come back to the council and say, pull some money out.
Well, like Dick says, I think you always wanna do things in the right, you always wanna do things properly and right, and that's why I think we need Tom and Dick in on it.
Yeah, watch, can we just put an asterisk, uh, that, it's up to, it's council's decision, right now the budget's in your hands. Do you wanna see an asterisk there, 'cause almost if the money's there.
But what does putting an asterisk there mean?
It'll give me the flexibility to maybe not spend it, because if it's in there, you all can come back to me and say, "Mr. Mayor, we budgeted that, why didn't you expend it?"
Well, that would be the same for beautification too.
I mean, it doesn't mean I have to take the most expensive example, if I can save money, I can do the same thing.
But we have them.
No, I know, I'm using it as an example, just because we have a budget item, I may, I may come in cheaper.
I don't think there's any official thing we can have in the budget that says we can't do.
For every single line item.
Yeah, pretty much.
So, I, I mean, I just, I would just leave it as it is, and if.
Leave it as it is, we don't, we're not passing this until May, let Debbie talk to Tom and, and, you know, talk to Tom and Mary and see if there's something that can be worked out and how we as the council approve this money or don't approve this money.
Well, I think we just, we just learned how it's done, we're approving sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Right.
They're gonna pass, pass it on to Charlene, and Charlene will, as long as it meets stuff, she'll pass it on to Pat, who'll double-check it all and sign off on it, and then they'll pay, then she'll write the checks to the Arts Alliance for what their bills are.
Yeah, and there, there, there's ways around it too, 'cause I could say that, hey, even though the money's there, I wanna go with a different vendor, 'cause it's cheaper.
Right.
Yeah, that's part of the process, so we can say I want a different, yeah, okay.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, so-
Good discussions, eh?
We're done with operating, um, and capital for parks and roads, so we're gonna go to the water sewer operating budget, page two, and go over the sewer department and the water department expenses.
Page two, water and sewer operating.
Sorry Scott.
It's on page two, isn't it?
Yeah. The other page two.
Well, it says W and S operating, page two.
You wanna be on W and S, operating budget.
This is Ken's first budget, you gotta use all these numbers.
No, I'm helping him, you're on the wrong page, so it's on stuff that he does operating budget.
What a jerk, yeah.
This is my twelfth and still confused as hell.
Me too, my fifth, and it's still confusing.
Then you went up on page two.
I think she's printing them smaller every year.
Yes, that's true, and my clothes are shrinking.
It used to take up this whole page.
That's the problem, our clothes are shrinking, that's why they look smaller.
My clothes are shrinking.
Everybody there?
Yes.
Yeah.
What did, here, my hearing is not good. Uh-huh, they're fine, they're the same, that you told me, the, when you got all the actual-
I mean, I, I don't see anything that's-
Yeah, beautification wasn't-
And it looks like, are, are we-
Yes, okay.
We figured we're gonna spend a good bit less on sludge than we, or, or if we split that out somehow.
We have some giant repairs coming in.
Okay, we're gonna item this out.
Um, fifty-three oh four sludge.
Okay, there's a good reason for that.
We're dropping to a hundred and four from a hundred and, act, last actual looks like it was a hundred fifty-two.
Yes.
Are we just calculating differently?
No, Mike is very proactive in doing the best he can down there and we are not going to haul to farmers' fields or Carroll County landfill any longer. We will be taking it up to Pennsylvania and it's cheaper.
Okay, and what do we do with the sludge when it gets to Pennsylvania?
We give it to the Pennsyl-
How many, just drop, what do we do?
Land, no.
Okay.
They take it out to Connaught.
All right, so it's, I guess it's just cheaper for us to take it up there than, okay, well, good job.
I thought as soon as they cross the state line, they open a bag of the truck and just keep-
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, I was wondering, just put the backup and just drop it down the road?
You think that's salt that they're putting the roads with.
Doesn't that tell you Maryland's too expensive?
How can it be cheaper to take it to Pennsylvania than to give it to farmers around here?
Because they don't even want it, that's why we have to take it on the landfill.
And then M D put a big regulation, how you put it on the field.
And then they have to do stormwater management.
Okay, okay, so M D is basically-
Phosphate?
M D has basically legislated sludge for fields out of existence?
They legislated it to Pennsylvania.
Pete, right there is, is a prime example of how the role, the rock rolls downhill. M D came out and said, we wanna do away with this program that helps water runoff, it'll just be fit, but they don't talk to anybody else, so they mandated, well, the next thing, the landfills can only accept so much sludge in layers on top of their decom- decomposing tracks, the sludge is overriding the percentage they can have in their layers, so the landfills say, well, we're gonna charge you an astronomical sum to accept it, or we just won't accept it anymore. Pennsylvania says, our landfills are still accepting, will it always be that way? No, sooner or later that market will get slimmer in Pennsylvania, because right now, we're getting to roll the dice well. It's gonna be on, on-
Then we'll go to West Virginia.
Yeah, West Virginia.
It's just gonna be a long-term project.
All right, well, great, a great job here finding this reduction.
How about the chemicals, why is every, pretty good size production of chemicals?
Probably because fuel prices are down.
Chemicals?
Well, gas, a lot of it's created from petrochemicals, so when gas is down, its prices are down.
Oil, not all down.
I just remember years, you know, I guess, back, I think when I was mayor, gas prices were shooting up and they were coming in saying, our chemical budget's going out, 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 at the roof, because when the prices went up, the chemicals shot up.
So one, one thing that you have on there is you have a jet truck for the sewer system for maintenance for fifty K?
Yeah, that's, that's my line item, uh, we do have now more imposed sanctions on us from legit, where we have to accomplish certain goals per year.
Mm-hmm.
All two thousand dollars a day, a jet truck coming out here.
The circle.
And we're gonna be proactive and try to cut, instead of eight years, cleaning all the sewer lines in the town boundary and trying to cut it to four, so that's what our truck and an outsourced truck coming here anyways.
Anybody say you can-
We're trying to keep ahead of what our insurance company is telling us we have to do now.
Okay.
And not only answer M D, we also answer to our insurance company.
Do you wanna announce, say?
I would, first of all.
So that from now on will be a new line item.
Would-
So Brian, is that annual fifty thousand?
I hope it's-
Yeah, I wouldn't say anything, yeah, but I would-
Five years?
But I would, when we get to the budget, then we'll discuss that.
I'll bring it up then.
Yeah, bring it up then.
I will bring it up then.
Yeah, as a close, yeah.
I will bring it up then.
Yeah, maybe you can create a plan.
Yeah, good, 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 good.
You know, X, X much, get X much.
And they're not even voters.
Okay, thanks guys, anything?
Dick, you see, you see anything in those?
No.
Okay.
These people do an excellent job of these, that's, uh-
Absolutely.
Well, that issue was just raised by a couple of the council, at least one councilman.
Uh, it, when we hit the, the, Brian, I mean, when we hit the part we start about budgets and salary, I'm gonna propose a bonus for our guys in the sewer tru-, water and sewer tru-
Well, in, an incentive program for cost-saving measures.
Because if-
Maybe coming up with some kind of program to sort that out.
Because if, yeah, by staff, hard work and action and-
It's, it's, well, it's certainly, and let's just clarify, we'll, we're gonna, certainly it is part of the job to save the town money, so you're already getting paid to do so, but if you can go above and beyond and come up with something very creative, then that may be worthy of some extra acknowledgement. Part of saving money and finding the best value, you should be doing as part of your day-to-day job, as always do, the town staff does it, Charlene does it, when she does, uh, uh, utility reviews-
But we need to come up with a way to acknowledge that.
Well, well, that's, that's part of the job, but if it's above and beyond, we will come up with a plan to acknowledge that and, and to reward that. But again, I just don't want anybody, an idea, if utility rates go down and they come forward with lower chili rates, you know, it's, it's part of your job to find the lowest utility rate. If it's above and beyond, we're looking at an incentive program and it was introduced by-
All right.
Yours truly.
What, uh, anybody other questions in this, or we ready to move on, Charlene?
Any questions on sewer?
I don't see any.
Okay, let's go to water, which is just below sewer. Any questions on those line items or stuff to add to the race?
Where are, where do we start on, what page does water start? Page two. Page two.
Same page, right under it.
Oh, got it, yeah, right here.
Same page.
Right here. Right, you didn't even leave the page.
Got water and sewer on the same page, imagine that.
Well, that's, that doesn't mix well.
I don't see any, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's less than last year and nothing looks like it's really out of line, so I don't really know that there's a whole lot for us to spend any time on here. Yep.
Occasionally the water and sewer commission receives, uh, questions and sometimes, uh, just doubt and concerns about fluoride in the water.
Yes.
Uh, actually, I, and I, I don't think this should affect the budget here, but I think there should be some consideration for whether we actually need to do that, uh, or we should just stop fluoridating the water.
When I was mayor, I actually proposed dropping the fluoridation and had it removed from my budget figures, um, and the council put it back in.
Is there any scientific basis to that?
We need scientific data.
Um, actually, if you go to the, um, I actually looked it up on, can't remember, the CDC website?
Scopes?
Or the NIH, what, no, 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 it was a government website, and they actually had a report which shows that at elevated fluoride levels, I mean, much higher than what we would do, um, there is an increased rate of osteoporosis.
But if you draw-
But it was a much higher level, but they, but they're, they're, but, well, what their statement said is we need to study it, but it costs money and the question we have to ask ourselves is, is it money we need to spend? And the issue is people I know that live outside of town who are on wells, I don't think their teeth are any worse, because we're all using fluoride toothpaste now.
Um, Matt, right when I went to the classroom, uh, water systems here in Maryland, they brought a special guy in who teaches at this university, his job is to try to debunk the fears of everything that's being put out on the internet about fluoride. The trace amounts that we put in fluoride that we put in our drinking water, if you pick up your toothpaste and read the amount of fluoride in your toothpaste, it's a thousand times more than the amount of trace element we put in our drinking water. In the state of Maryland, there is no mandated rule for us to add fluoride to our water, the only thing that we have to do is notify the public and we are now discontinuing that service. This is where a lot of the debate comes in, then it is up to the private citizen, if they want us to infant, it only affects infants and the old. It's the only fluoride really can affect you, as you're growing and maturing, they give you drops to put in their food to help you, your bones mature. So, regulation-wise, there is nothing saying we have to put fluoride in our water. Are we putting something bad in our water? I've lived here all my life, if I was putting something that I knew to be harmful in this water, I would be the first one up here banging on that door. We are doing everything within state, federal regulations in our water, so the whole scare tactic of somebody running around saying fluoride causes cancer and it causes this, it is not true, it has never been scientifically proven. For every point-
No, the question is, do we want to spend the money to do it?
But is there a benefit to it, your point well made, and thank you.
Yeah. No, my question was purely dollars and cents.
But is there a benefit, yeah, is it, well, now, is it worth two thousand bucks, is it much, but is it a lot of trouble for man-hours to put this in the test?
It, it's not a lot of man-hours, it's, it's, we've got, actually, Mike and the guys and I used to do stations back then, we've actually got a real good system now, it took us a while to get good pump and figure out-
But isn't it an automatic feeder and we have to replace this pump at a thousand, the total cost to do this, because quite frankly, I don't think there's a benefit.
Well, that's-
I don't think it's bad either.
Yeah, yeah, my question was, do we gain a benefit, we're all using fluoride toothpaste, so my thought is, do we need it?
It does-
Exactly, no, there's, there's no, there's no pro, there's nobody saying you have to do it.
Well, not have to, but even if it's a benefit, certain things you don't have, we don't have to have an arts council, but we think it's a benefit.
Barney's got a hand up.
Well, it was brought up last time when you suggested, we went to the health department, it was Carroll County Health Department that said, by all means, do not stop your fluoride.
Because I know several towns have.
There's a lot of studies for it and there's a lot of studies against it.
They made a strong recommendation not to stop it.
Carroll County Health Department. And that, M D, they recommended that.
Well, then if, that, then that's-
You mean M D recommends we keep doing it?
Then, we're, we're politicians, not scientists, not, we've got an expert and an expert.
Given the small amount of money and some recommendations, I recommend council-
Yeah, it's not, it's not big, it's not big dollars.
But I'm with you, if there's not no benefit.
Yeah, I, my question was, you know, is there a benefit, because I mean, I know a lot of people around-
Just don't flush it down the toilet.
Well, I know a lot of people around town on well water and I don't know that they're suffering for not having the fluoride.
I mean, can you investigate this for us and get back to it?
It's an, it's an, it, I would say it's-
The last, the comments that Barney made concerned me.
Right, it's anecdotal, our, our information here is anecdotal, politicians, if it's a scientific expert side, say we defer it.
A politician can't be served, you're a politician.
Can I have an, can I have an ethics violation forum for slander?
Well, we're all politicians at election time, aren't we?
Okay. I will say that, I mean, over the years, I have been approached by quite a few people mentioning, as you probably have too, on water and sewer.
It was a flag.
I did have, I, I've been approached by quite a few people who said, hey, I don't want it, so, we have to ask ourselves, is it worth doing when we have citizens who don't want it?
The, the, the issue is with some of the people that they run the studies saying it's fair and all that, but some of the people simply say that, showing that there's no real benefit or that you did it from other sources and that, or, it shouldn't be forced on you.
Yeah, I, I guess that was really the argument I've heard, you're forcing it on me and I get it myself from my toothpaste.
Basically, that gets admission to this table, that's really what it is.
Well, I'm good with the water and sewer budget, uh.
All right, let's move on.
All right, so, anything more for the water department in the operating budget? If not, we can move on to page six of the capital improvement budget, and you'll see all of the water sewer capital expenses coming up here.
Peter, are we gonna, what time are we going to?
I don't know, what time you all wanna go to?
Eleven. Ah, let's just see if we can get it right.
I tend to, I-
Well, let's see, I mean, I guess I was gonna say if we're going, because we're hoping to do this in two nights, so, would, so how far have we gotten, Charlene?
Are we halfway done yet?
Well, we're almost finished with the public works departments as soon as we're done with the capital water sewer.
All right, and then how much is left?
Well, we need to do all the revenues, we need to do planning and zoning.
There's not much we can do on revenue.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Well, we do need to change that one, we need to take money out of the county share taxes, seventy thousand.
Okay, but that's-
Oh, yeah.
That's, yeah, oh-
I, I went up at six thousand to recycle limits, if we don't do it tomorrow.
Okay, well, let's finish, get, get through this and then we'll-
You put it in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I'm good.
Okay.
So you've got us on page six, capital improvement budget.
Page six, you have your sewer capital improvement projects first and then your water system and then all these other ones.
Okay Barney, the effluent, let me see, are we on, okay, so effluent water temperature reduction's on hold.
Thank goodness.
Enclosure for the E and R system, okay, that's a, that's thirty-five grand. Working on some of the lift stations. All right, guys, I don't have any questions, I mean-
Lot of work this time in fixing stuff.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Painting the tank, no, not painting the tank. Water pumps.
Well, the well exploration, you've got fifty thousand dollars, correct? Development.
Yes, well.
That's, um, source water, can you do it again?
So, well, exploration, development, uh-
Yeah, line nineteen thirty-five, yeah, why is that there?
Yeah, why is that there, I didn't-
That's my question, why is it there, did you have it in, uh-
I depended on dip, ex-press, maybe that's why it's in there.
We haven't observed, right?
That's listed as source water engineering.
So.
Did you already have it in there?
Well, guys, we're on, we're on, I think we're, we're, I guess we're on this whole section, so let's-
Let's pull that there.
So, so any questions about anything but that line, Scott?
So, mini excavator, Brian, you wanna tamper?
This is a, an attachment for-
Well, I know it's an attachment, we, we don't have one already?
Nick, if we have a handheld one, what I like to do is go ahead and get, we require the attachments to make it faster, to make it actually better compacting, so we put in these dips in our rigs when I make my two-foot diggers, and in a way we can accomplish it, give heavy hardcore compacting, and that would be a fast-
We're gonna store this in the maintenance building, with the, stored in the maintenance building with the rest of the attachments?
What's that? Yes. Yep.
Okay. All right, if no more questions about that, then you guys can discuss this fifty thousand in exploration.
What is it for, gentlemen?
Oh, thanks. And it says TBD by mayor and council.
To be determined.
It's, yeah.
No, but what's the explorers?
Well, it says, it's, yeah.
What's it there for? Does anybody have an explanation?
And that's if, you know, you think-
Oh, if we want to.
That gets us one, one real, one tricked out Ford Explorer, all right, that's a goal.
My- Yeah, my, my, my apologies, I would not have put it in there with an explanation, I recommend you remove it unless-
Well, it says TBD mayor, and then it says council.
I reca-, I recommend you pull it out.
Well, the thought was to put some funding in there in case Harrison Leisure did go for it and we needed some design money.
That's the question I asked.
Okay, well, that's a good answer.
Yeah, leave it in there.
That's what it's for.
That's a good answer.
See, that's why you put it in there.
What did I just ask that question?
Okay, well, I think that's a, I think that's a good-
But then Barney was like, well, that really should be decided by the council.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And I couldn't think of all of that time, well, so.
Well, I, okay, all right, well, I think, I think, guys, I think that all makes sense that if we, if we go forward, we're gonna need, we're gonna need to spend some dollars.
Well, if Barney did not come, Barney did go.
Don't you already have a, a, a lot of money in reserve for that?
You're full water, you're getting water, yeah.
It should be, if we move, if-
There was a lot of money in reserve already for well exploration in reserves.
Reserves will be paying for this.
Right, but if we move forward with, i- i- if we move forward with Harrison LeSheer.
Yeah, this is cap, this is cap.
Yeah, we don't have to spend it, but see, after we get back to that, if it's in a budget, do we have to spend it?
No, it's in a budget, we don't have to spend it.
Well, then what happens, what happens, which I really hate, is somebody comes running into a meeting and needs emergency money, I hate that.
But that's because if you read the code, Parks has that for-
I'd rather not spend it than-
Maybe, maybe that's the differential, maybe that's the differential. Go back and look at the code, in the code, it says, once the council approves it, Parks can allocate it. Maybe that's the differential. That's, it's a little different, the other, the other commissions can't do that. Maybe that's.
Scott?
Oh, my turn?
No, 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 Bob?
He's not anymore.
So, a different question, under capital improvements, we're repainting an elevated storage tank number one, which is a tank by Walmart. So, normally, I'd say, yeah, cool, that's fine, what I wanna question is the amount that's put there, only for the simple fact there's lead paint on that tank? So, does it have to be removed, which is an environmental concern, prior to painting, because you normally don't paint over that, right? You have to strip it off, so it's gonna cost probably a lot more than forty K.
Unless they have other meetings that help, but normally, absolutely.
Right, so it's gonna probably cost more than forty K just to.
Yeah, I've seen that, when, when they basically put a huge curtain on the thing.
The next fiscal year.
Well, I see the next fiscal year jumps up to a hundred and fifty K, but, I mean.
Right, it's for design.
So, it's forty K for design before they even do it?
We did the same thing up here.
Why would you pay?
Yeah, we did the one up, uh, by Wagner Brothers a couple of years back.
It's a lot on design.
Why would you spend forty thousand dollars to figure out how to paint a tower?
I'm let paint.
Uh, but it's a tower, you're gonna put a curtain over it and.
You don't need to figure out.
Well, if the bids come in less, then there'll be less, what did we spend last time?
Why don't you just make a requirement on the bid that you safely remove it and comply with all, even standards?
Well, but, but, no, this is a bid to, to.
To design how you're gonna take it off.
Design, how you're.
That's what I'm saying, don't, when you do the bid to repaint it, include it in the bid that you need to do remediation to accommodate.
Right. Part of your tailgates.
How's, how's it, how's it, I mean, Barney's the pro at this, how's this normally done, is it normally done like this, or should we just budget both of them together and tell one guy to do it all? In one, in one budget, one bid?
We generally do the design second.
Well, why would we, why don't you make it as part of the bid, that they have their.
I guess, I'm just guessing that somebody who's gonna do this knows what they're doing.
Right, it should be part of the bid, you just do it to meet all standards?
My, my, and I wanna, I wanna hear what Barney says, but my thought is, is that if you, I go talk to Bob and I say, hey, how do you do this? He says, well, here's how I'm gonna approach it, and this is what it's gonna cost in materials and everything else, I go to Chris, Chris is gonna say, well, here's how I do it. I'm, Chris isn't gonna use Bob's quote and say, oh, well, okay, now I'm gonna go off of Bob's design, because he's gonna have a different way to do it. So, I totally agree with the mayor, bundle it together, and it should be part of the whole solution of, here's how you do it, and here's how much it's gonna cost.
Does that make sense, Barney?
It, it, it is efficient that way.
Yeah, we don't need to do our own independent, it's not that critical.
But, what, what?
Make, put the liability on them.
What, yeah, that's exactly right, when, when we do it this way, okay, we are accepting the liability, um.
Even worse, yeah, we're actually spending money to accept more liability.
Correct, which is why I'm bringing it up.
Let's put, let's.
Are we, is Barney, is Barney coming down to M M L at all this year?
Is he in there? Two people are.
No, I don't have the money to send him, so don't even.
Because. Because.
Dick and Melissa are coming.
Okay, I've just, because, because over the years, I've kinda thought it'd be good if we rotated down like Barney and Brian, because when we go down, there'll be a bunch of companies down there who'll be touting their stuff for doing this.
Yeah, I think we talked about that this year.
I put it. I can tell you what happened, Debbie put in for two people a year, I put it for one, because we typically take zero.
Oh, it's Debbie's fault, Debbie's fault.
No, no, I'm just letting, I'm being very transparent.
You guys didn't come up the money, I just don't have.
Yeah, I, I took it out.
We have a budget here.
I, I see, I, I see a hand from Heather in the back.
And the only reason we have it is. There's also just vendor day, uh, to your plate, Peter.
Yep, there's what?
Like vendor.
Vendor day, right.
They could come down for the one day.
Come down for the day and just, right, send staff down for the day just to, just to go through all the vendor things.
Well, they need to stay overnight, they can't, they can't drive three hours.
That's the budget question.
Yeah.
That's a long ride for one day now.
I just.
I've done it.
So, can we, hey, can we close on this one item?
Yes.
I think the forty K needs to be encapsulated somehow into the whole bit thing, not done separately.
I just.
That's fine, I don't.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, put it all together in one package for next year instead of.
If that's when you wanna do it, then I'd do it for next year.
But, I, I still wanna drill down to why we put forty K in a budget for design, if I estimate a hundred and fifty bucks an hour for a man, man-hour.
About half, um, half of that for the other take, with lead, I don't know how much more is, uh.
Can we take that, I don't wanna rush, take the same amount, put it in the overall package, we won't have to use it.
I just. I just, I'm just, just, I still can't understand why we would pay forty thousand dollars for somebody to tell us how to design it.
And, and I can, this is a, this is a hazardous substance, okay, you got the government all, and, and by the government, I mean federal government, it's all over, EPA's all over this kind of stuff.
Standard practices.
People, people that do this, and, and every water tower is different, okay, this is not like the one we did seven or eight years ago, it's gonna be different than that, they're gonna need different.
And, and I also think that Barney, we've had this discussion before, when he puts in a proposal, the costs are gonna be covered.
Right.
He's, he's very good to make sure the cost, the cost is gonna be covered.
Yeah, he said, and he, I think his impression, he thinks it's pretty high here.
Barney, did I say that politically correct enough? The cost is gonna be covered.
But I said Barney, I mean, just.
I've heard Cadillac.
From my, from.
That's it, Cadillac Barney, I've heard that.
Cadillac.
I'd never say that at the council table.
Hey Barney, could be worse, it could've called you a politician.
Everybody's getting beat up tonight, we gotta get Scott on something.
They have to meet EPA standard.
I'm, I'm assuming these guys have to do it right, they have to meet standard. But they're responsible at the end of the day.
I, I like Bob's idea, that's okay, as long as they meet the standard, I like Bob's idea, we don't, that, we're paying to accept liability, to put the liability on them, right into our contract, you must comply with all government standards, they actually have to anyway. But let's do that, you, I, can we, I recommend the council take the forty out of that, if you wanna put extra back in the overall cost, put that forty over there.
But that'll be in the next, that'll be next year.
All right, put it in next year, we don't need.
All right, so, so pull it out, Charlie.
Score.
And, and next, and in your out year, see your out year for seventeen, basically make that one ninety.
One ninety?
Does that, did I get that right?
I still think that needs to be looked at, but yeah, that's fine, no problem.
Yes, you did.
We won't be doing this project next fiscal year, we will, we're not gonna do design this year and then actually do it next fiscal year, we're gonna do it all next fiscal year.
According to what?
Barney's gonna go, basically said, here's bids to fix this thing.
He's, he's taking the highway user revenues and we're the.
All right, so.
Nobody left.
Anything else on this page?
How to feel?
Anything else?
No.
All right, no, what's next, Charlie?
Okay, well, maybe while Marsh is here, she's water sewer.
All right, while Marsh is here, we'll do it.
Any questions you might have on the water sewer bills, um, and the administration, um, costs.
Okay, give us a page.
So, this is gonna be the water sewer budgets, page one is revenues, if you have any questions there.
Water sewer operating budget.
Yep, page one.
Revenues.
Little small page.
These revenues were actually based more on fiscal year fourteen's actuals, because there was no rate increases, and we got a little bit less than we thought we were gonna get, so that's where there's revenue.
People aren't using enough water.
Go figure, we said conserve.
Well, we need, yeah, we need to stop that.
We gave out low U water filters.
We send out leak letters telling them every time.
Yeah.
And, and, and the town, the town people.
Yeah, when, when somebody's got a leak, we need to stop telling them, we need to just, you know, bill them.
And, and when, when, when we ended up doing such a good job to make the water rates for consumption, people have, you know, stopped doing it.
We're in the business of selling water, and, you know, it doesn't really cost us much more to sell the extra water.
We also lost money on leases, we had a town leases on some of our tanks, what do I, that was.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah, like the, um, the cell guys and stuff, yeah.
That's six grand, that's why I.
Yeah, next, was that, that's okay, next tell's gone, so it's not an issue.
No, I don't wanna hear the amount.
What I'm trying to highlight on this page is the connection charges for sewer and water, eleven thousand nine hundred each. Those have bounced back and forth between the capital budget and the operating budget, and we needed them in the operating budget this year, uh, because it was just a tiny bit short. These are for operating expenses, they do not get transferred into reserves like other permit fees, so they're in here, um, for that reason.
That's the wrong, that's the wrong place for them.
So.
Well, that's what she's saying, why we, why shouldn't we put them here, because it brings.
I thought the connection was eighteen thousand.
It's revenue.
The what?
It is revenue.
I thought the connection for water and sewer is like eighteen thousand.
Not the actual connection, there's other things that go into that.
Well, this is.
Is it more now? Is it more than eighteen thousand to connect to water and sewerage?
Well, you got, it goes into different areas like fire and streets.
Yeah, this is one smaller part of that.
The eighteen thousand gets divided into a bunch of different things.
And the only benefit that water and sewer gets out of it is eleven nine, out of eighteen, eleven, nine goes into water sewer, you got some going to fire, some going to streets and roads.
It gets divided.
So, it's interesting that the, while they're talking about that, the penalties for late payment is the same exact amount as the connection charges. And historically, over the past four years, we've essentially had the same amount of money in penalty fees every year.
Same people are late all the time.
But I'm just saying, that's peculiar.
And Mary would know.
It's, it's peculiar, thank, thank you for the pink cards, um.
Coming from the woman who opens the checks. That's true.
It's, it's peculiar that every year, we've had just about the same amount, there hasn't been a drop, there hasn't been an increase, it's just stayed flat and it's about a twelve K. That's weird, that's not.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think, I think Mary, I think Mary hit the nail on the head, it's the same people who are always late, who always use the same amount of water, who we always make the same amount of money from.
Been here for five years.
So, uh, getting back to the, if the connection charges should not be in the operating revenue, so, I mean, if, what I'm trying to point out is, we don't wanna get back to, we never wanna get back to the situation years ago where the systems weren't paying for themselves, so.
Well, what she says is, she shifts them back and forth depending upon what we, because we need in a given year.
If you look on page, let me find it.
This is what we were talking about.
Page three of the water sewer budget, you will see that.
Operating budget?
Page of, of the water sewer operating budget?
Page three of the water sewer operating budget, the very last thing mentioned there is transfer the capital budget, that's twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-four.
Which is eleven thousand.
So, you can see that we, we needed just a tiny bit, we could have cut something, a few dollars, but the water sewer department submitted the budget, that's what they needed. If I could cover it this way, that's, that's what I did.
But.
And these are for operating expenses, these connection charges, it's what it costs the town to put the meters in the homes and whatnot, we pay for the meters out of our, um, operating budget.
We pay, we pay the staff to do it out of our operating budget.
But those are really capital costs, those are really.
We just put it in capital before because we didn't need it in operating.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know if it's a meter capital, or is it, I guess?
Meter's capital expense.
A meter's not capital.
But usually it's a minimal, yeah, it's an agreed to minimum amount.
It's like five grand.
But you also, you also have to.
But you, right, a bunch of meters you capitalize.
If you did a meter replacement program, yes, that would be capital.
That's capitalized.
But don't you have to realize the, either one time or spread across an amount?
If you capitalize, you do, you do spread it across, but.
You have to amortize it or whatever.
You know, all, all CPAs just.
Well, when you, when you're dealing with these, these one-time small expense, like she said, if we did the whole.
They're too small.
Because, well, I remember a few years ago, we did the whole town, that was different, we went in and changed every water meter in the town, that was a different question, and we're gonna have to do that again sometime. Because these are all, the batteries will all die on these at some point, I guess, and we'll have to sweep the town again.
But what this does show is the gap between what we're taking in and what we need to spend to keep things running is getting smaller every year. So, the commission may need to look at rates next year.
We need to sell more water.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, as a practical matter, we need to sell, you know, we need another restaurant, or somebody who's gonna, you know, use the water. Because, I mean, let's face it, when, we have the infrastructure in place, the difference to us between selling six hundred thousand gallons worth of water and seven hundred thousands of gallons of water, it costs us almost nothing, but we make a tremendous of extra amount of money.
If, if I may, you wanna try to sell seven hundred thousand, then you're selling six hundred thousand, now you can take away your sixty thousand for development, you, you, you have to put all that together.
Right, well, I'm saying, we need to, we need to get some restaurants and things to take that up to generate money.
What we've been doing here, the reason we have progressive rates in this town is to encourage more conservation, and the reason for doing that was both the, the, uh, uh, M D E consent order. Uh, and the fact that if you can get people to be more conservative, you can drive down the amount of water that people use, there's more water available to meet the needs of Dewey Center Street Development and all that. Now, admittedly, one says that if you drive the amount of water down, the costs obviously don't really change.
No.
You, your reward can be to raise rates to your, your customers, but the objective here is that we want to, as we bring these growth elements online, that they take up that water slot. And we are generating enough revenue, so, uh, we don't wanna encourage sale.
No, that's like I said, we, a restaurant, we need businesses to take it.
What we're gonna do is manage the resource in such a way that we meet all current demand and all reasonable foreseeable future demand.
I think what we're seeing happening is, you know, over the years, as we're all replacing our appliances, you know, you put in a new washer, boy, I mean, your, you know, your water usage goes down, you know, a whole bunch.
Every day.
Have you put in a new washer recently?
No, my.
They use a fraction of what they used to.
I've got nineteen sixty-seven toilets down there, I know, and I'm gonna tell you what, it takes about fifteen or twenty gallons of water to flush that thing. If, uh, this swirls in a bowl for a long time.
This is not the appropriate time, councilman.
I'm just talking about the water.
This meeting.
Yeah, that's Bob.
I don't even have a title for that, sir. I'll tell you, Bob, for next week's meeting, I want you to shoot a video and bring him back.
I'll do that, I'll, I'll do that for you.
Mister, 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 Mister Council President, I, I rise on a personal point of order, this meeting has really gone to crap.
Okay, is any other, any other issues in this section? Any other, any other water revenue questions?
All right, then we can go to page three of the water sewer budget.
Sorry, uh, before we leave though, I do, I do, I do have one serious question, so, just to make sure, the trend, just the, the overall trend, because again, um, Dick and I talked about this extensively last year. The overall trend is less consumption, meaning less revenue.
Less income.
Less income, so, which means we've gotta watch it, and you're suggesting perhaps next year, I hate to say it, but we have to be responsible, next year, there may be a slight need for an increase.
Maybe.
Let's revisit that one next year.
It just depends, we've got a fifty thousand dollar extra expenses here for the sewer, um, jet truck, maybe we'll decide not to do that the following year, and then we're on.
Good, that's all, okay, good, that's it.
And, yeah, maybe some developer will come in and build out something that'll suck up some water.
Or should we buy a second jet truck?
We're holding on to an I N I project.
Yeah, I need to drag us.
No, all right, good, just wanna make. Okay, we are now on page.
We've been funding, we've been funding these costs in the water, mainly through the fact that we have decreased the amount of operating revenue, you look at it here, that goes to the White Dance Capital Project. Because we've gone from three hundred thousand, two hundred forty-two thousand, then, then we went to thirty-six thousand, this year is budgeted at, uh.
Where are you, Dick, where are you?
So.
Where, where, where you pulled?
I'm on page, uh, three, the bottom where it says transfer, transfer to capital, so we've been actually financing, uh, our operating by reducing the amount that we're making available to fund capital projects. And, and, yeah, that's a trend that can't continue.
At some point, you gotta do, you gotta do that capital work.
Part of the theory is that we had that years where we raised those rates to, to get out of a hole, was to give the customers a break. And say, look, you know, we're, we're not gonna keep coming back, you were raising rates every single year on you, you've done it for three out of five years, and, uh, allow this to happen. We got to a point where it looks like next year, we're gonna seriously have to say, we may have to raise the rates to be the operating cost, and to restore that funding to the, uh, reserves in water and sewer. Because we do, we are looking at major water and sewer expenses in the future, and, uh, so, just be aware that, you know, it's not just sale of water that's been taken care of that or anything.
My, yeah, that's my point.
All right, all right, Charlie, what do you wanna say?
Okay, well, also on page three, we have the administrative expenses, starts with audit fees and goes all the way down to, um, interest on bonds and notes, things like that. So, if you wanna look those over, if you have any questions.
Let me get, and I know Ken and I have talked about this before, the interest on bonds and notes, those are fixed instruments, we can't pay them off, correct?
Yeah, you can't pay them off.
True, true.
Can't pay them off early.
Uh, and then, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask a question, because it's two hundred K, have we looked at the prepayment penalties? Assuming, and, you know, I'm on soapbox again, but. Assuming, and, you know, I'm on soapbox again, but I, I don't see it as coming up for the solution yet. Assuming we have excess capital, excess reserves in water and sewer. Meaning, meaning whatever number, whatever number we need for, so there's some number we need for reserves, some number we need for operating capital.
Can we pay it off? We have to look at what the penalty is. Is there a penalty or is it, you can't do it at all?
Well, Holly did look at that, and I believe she sent Dick an email. One loan cannot be paid off until a certain date.
Period, even with penalty?
You're talking about the twenty nineteen?
Yeah. And the main thing is there's not enough in the reserves to pay them off.
But my question is this. I- i- if, have we done an analysis that says, right now we're spending two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Is it, is it cheaper to take the penalty than to keep paying the interest?
Yeah, let's shorten the question up. That's the question.
Thank you, thank you, because, thank you, because we have.
Charlene, can you research that and get back to us?
Well, Holly would probably do that.
Do you know, are you the one she sent that email to?
I didn't ask that specific question.
Then it was Ken. Okay.
Can we please get an answer? It's a good question. Can we please get an answer for Councilman by the next meeting and move on?
Thank you.
It's a good question.
Money's sitting there, it's not being used.
Good question. But I don't want to spend a lot of time saying it over and over.
Thank you.
I just have a general question about water, and it's been brought up since I ran. Where is the plan going forward to upgrade the pipelines between the three towers and starting to do all the other pipes, the secondary lines?
Well, we've, we've completed the, the main from one tower to the other on Main Street.
Yeah, I remember that.
Have we done all three?
No, that, that part's done. And we, um, these guys, before I got here, brought a twelve inch across twenty-seven into, into Wapping Park. And then that bridge was off three ways. And then what we did as part of our water main, um, made this upgrade. We also put in the, a main that didn't connect to the Main Street, went up Center Street to get to, um, Center Street.
Look out, cross.
Cross. Um, so that main didn't exist. So we, we provided an extra connection there. There was a twelve inch main we ran up there. It's an eight inch that comes down. So, um, essentially, you have three eight inch branches that, that make up for that twelve inch that goes out to the water tower.
But is it, does it make that twelve inch go all the way down, uh, Center Street?
Yeah, they. Yes, we would want to con- continue that twelve inch all the way up.
Yes.
To, to the park.
But that should be tied into when you, um.
Somebody comes in to develop, he's gonna have to put that in.
Part of your road upgrade.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't overlooking.
We, we just spent a lot of money, but you're, you're satisfied with where we are right now and what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hours getting late, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Your medium's encouraging.
No, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Any, any other, any other, any other questions on this?
The typical swirls of everything I'm gonna ask about the plumbing that runs the toilet.
Good.
Any other questions? All right, Charlene, what's up next?
Well, I'd like to go over Debbie's line items.
Nope, we're done.
All right, Debbie, what's your line item? All that money we spent for the Corks Association.
That's easy. Unplug his mic.
Yeah, where, where is Debbie?
Have we completed with these guys? You're gone. Have we completed with the staff?
We're done with, um, water sewer.
So Brian?
Batteries.
Thanks, sir.
Batteries. You mentioned batteries. Do we have a, have we programmed capital for battery replacement labor? Do we know how long that they li- how long, how long do the batteries replace?
Oh, oh, you're talking about in the water meters?
Yeah, how long do batteries last? When are they gonna come due? Have we programmed that?
Bad news, bad news, quick testing in twenty years.
So we got about twelve left.
We have plenty of time. Yeah, plenty of time. All right, move on. Move on, thank you.
Thank you.
We just, we want to make sure we can clear the staff out. Debbie's gonna be here next week too, we know that.
Okay, so Brian, we're done with Brian? We're done with Marcia?
Yep.
Done with Mary?
Nope.
Nope, sorry, Mary.
Should we get Mary out of here?
I understand.
Are we done with Dick?
I'm gonna stay anyway.
How much are we paying Dick?
I don't know.
Have a nice day.
Worth everything.
See you, Brian. See you, Marcia.
That's for all you do, Brian.
Heather, Melissa are done?
No.
No.
Can we get them out?
I'm gonna stay here anyway.
Debbie's gotta stay for every budget meeting, anyway.
How, how far are we going on this?
Ten, I got a ten.
I'm about white myself, but I want to go through the ladies out.
We haven't hit ten yet.
I'd like to just be done then. I, they can continue on without.
Let's do Mary.
I'm not here next week.
Wait a minute, we gotta get Scott's done then.
Huh?
He's not gonna be here next week. Well, I also, yeah, let's do Mary now then.
Yeah, that's, I just said do Mary.
He's just doing a, you guys think he's taking a picture, he's doing a selfie. He doesn't take pictures of other people.
All right, guys, general fund, page four.
Bottom section, sanitation.
Sanitation department.
The most important commission ever.
The only issue there was that second yard waste pickup.
Why? Which page?
Because I think only Bob, King, and, uh, what's his name?
We make it Pete, Pete, Pete Ballas.
Pete Ballas. I think you're going to two people that want it.
What page was it?
Well, no, the, actually, the commission ended up asking for it at the meeting.
Charlie, what did we?
It's a recommendation.
Bob and I need to pay.
General Fund, page four.
Thank you.
No, actually, actually, the sanitation recycling commission ended up discussing this and recommended that they'd like to put a second one in.
Okay, then it wasn't just Bob and?
No, Bob wasn't even there when it was discussed.
Well, that's a council decision then. I think I took it out.
No, it says two extra pickups required.
Oh, I just threatened to take it out.
In because it was submitted after the budget was basically done. They wanted to add.
It isn't.
So we would need to add two yard waste.
They have two yard wastes. They want two more?
No, they have their yard waste subcategory.
Okay, so I did take, okay.
Yeah, they want to add two more in there.
That's what happened.
April is one pickup, two in April, March.
Okay. Yard waste, it shows twelve, five, seventy-six, correct?
Yep.
It says that's two extra pick, oh, so that was, there's two extra pickups requested. They're not in that number then?
Two more submitted.
Correct.
Okay, so you want to basically.
So I, we want to add like seventeen hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
Which is nothing, and we, we're already plus thirty K in the budget right now. So I recommend adding two K.
Yeah, what do we? Yeah, that's fine. I got no problem with that. How about you guys? Seventeen hundred dollars and we're?
And it's, we're, we're saving all kinds of money in sanitation recycling.
Put this way, ask us if we oppose and let's keep, keep moving.
Let's go.
Two K.
Right.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Oh, two thousand?
Yeah, yeah, two K to make sure there's plenty.
So bump it up to fourteen, five, seven, six, please.
And then Scott, are you okay with the current pro- current provider, service provider?
Uh, they.
We have discussed that this contract, it will be up June thirty, two thousand sixteen, which means we can, like, January next year, put out for a new bid.
So we will repeat.
Got it. Okay, good. I'm good. Thank you.
And this one, and this, this contract price is down about a hundred eighty thousand from what it was three years ago. So you might even be able to drive it a little bit lower.
Get what you're paid for.
We'll see.
Well.
Just make that comment.
The landfill fees, since the guy saved fifty, the guy.
They've been really squirrely. Mary's hoping to get better numbers out of them. But to be honest, right now, what we get doesn't seem to match up with what we think it should be.
It hasn't.
I, it's really.
Still doesn't match up?
All over the place.
Well, I mean, are they, are they trying to?
No, 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 we're not.
We are not.
Money.
Oh, okay, I was worried they were.
We feel we should be paying a lot more based off of what we're seeing for numbers and expectations, and what we're getting in for invoices is way less. And we've asked about it. They continue to do that, so I will just make a, a comment to the council, plan in the future, going with somebody else, that we're gonna get more realistic numbers.
It's gonna get, it's gonna be higher.
I, I believe it will possibly be higher, but.
It is what it is right now.
It's considerably lower than what we had before. By what we, what, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, but I think we're, I think we're doing a much better job of recycling too, as a town.
Well, but see, the figures that I'm getting are not reflecting that.
The numbers, they're not your numbers, Peter.
The trash tonnage figures are down, but the recycling figures are not up to compensate.
Gotcha.
Our entire town is not making less waste. The same amount of people are here. One way or another, either recycling goes up and trash goes down or vice versa. You don't have both.
Yeah, yeah, they're both, yeah, yeah.
Without a population difference.
Oh, well, I mean, you can drive around here on any recycling night and you see full bins out there with the, the lids and.
In fact, people are taking other people's bins that happened to blow in the yard, so.
Pat's stuff always blows the money, I haven't seen it.
He talked about some yard stuff.
Chris, it doesn't blow.
So anyways, I think, I think for sanitation recycling, Mary, back me up, the numbers are good right now. Uh, my main concern was to ensure that we had money in there for the bins, which I'm supposing one of these lines is the bins?
And, yes.
Okay, yes, I see it. So I'm.
We only have about fifty tons right now on hand.
And so does this also account for, are the shredding events in here, but?
Yeah, I see that.
The newest thing that the effort they're doing, and I announced this at the Monday meeting, was the drug recycling, and I don't know if there's a cost.
This does not reflect that cost, we, because that came in so late.
Do we know what it is? Like a rough?
The one figure that I saw for the container was like a thousand dollars. But anything further than that, I don't know.
So, can I make a, since it's so, such a small amount, can I make a recommendation?
Twenty-five?
Huh? Twenty-five would be fine, just a budget for that. We don't use it great, but because of the fact that we don't have.
Is this to put in like the permanent drug, throw your stuff in?
This is, this is, yes. Um, some of the council members have, look, they have them in Frederick in two different places. There's the building behind them.
It is used and there is history behind it.
That has, um, this drug collection station type thing.
We actually, we actually did a, we did a couple of them here at the police station.
And, and, and as, as the co-chair on recycling and sanitation said, why would they want to break in here and get used old drugs? Went right down the street is a pharmacy they can break in and get new ones.
So there, there is a.
Security is easier.
We, we don't have an alarm on ours.
Yeah, security.
And it'll destroy it and process it. I don't have that information. I know there's a flyer for it, but.
Could we put twenty-five and go?
Yeah. I, I would just say rough budget, twenty-five. And if we have to do a budget amendment, I don't think it's gonna be more than that. I think it'll be less based off of.
Where do you plan to put it?
Out here in the vestibule.
Oh, in town, actually in town hall.
It looks like a mailbox.
It'll be locked in, the building, the building's alarmed. There you go. So.
You need something nobody can get in. All right, guys, you good? Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars.
What's this called? A drug what?
This is a drug.
Scott's drug.
Re- reclamation or a.
Scott's drug container.
Yeah, it's not my drug.
Drug trash can.
Yes, great. Drug recycling.
It's a, it's a, no.
It's gonna be forever my container, Scott's drug container, great.
It's an excellent.
I'll be opening a store.
Just paint a name on it, we'll dump him Scott's.
Okay, what's next?
Awesome.
All right, so let's do planning and zoning now.
So are we done with Mary?
We're done with Mary.
Bye, Mary.
Good night.
What about Jason? What's Jason doing?
He's thinking about what he's done.
Does everybody know Jason?
Nope.
Are you running for town council?
Do you see this note that you put there?
Go, keep going.
I know, I didn't do that.
Stop.
All right.
I don't want to take up any more of the council's time. I know we're already running through, uh, weight with the budget. But I'm Jason Ford, I'm running for town council.
Are you really?
Normally what happens is you're required to buy us a drink after the first meeting.
Yeah, we were all wondering what you look like. We're all, and you also work for the water department?
He was at the last council meeting.
No, 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 no. This is Jason.
That's what I thought. I said, I didn't know he was a police officer. Okay, good. Somebody told me to see, he works in the water department. There's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors, Jason. There's a lot of rumors.
All right.
On a side note, seriously.
Okay.
Okay. I haven't heard any, so.
So he's not a teacher.
So, General Fund operating budget, page five. At the bottom, we're gonna start with the development planning department, and that's submitted by planning and zoning and economic development. And that's Heather and Melissa. And Mayor Pat. We have a PR up there.
Okay, girls.
Thanks, guys.
Rocket.
Yeah, let's get you all out of here.
Page five.
Well, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Good, approve it.
Why are, wonder, why are we expecting to spend so much less on, uh, Tom?
Because of master plans.
Oh, okay, well, that's a good reason. I just saw a big drop in, in our legal fees. And I was like, okay, Matthew, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
You guys don't think you're new legal for all you're selling?
Looking out for Tom? That, yes.
Did you hear us say?
No, we're not planning on getting into any more litigation. Do you have them split?
I don't think there, I don't think there'll be anybody else to litigate against us when it all gets done.
We don't anticipate them to just.
What's the, the seventy-five hundred for the plotter?
Yes. That is our, um.
I'd like to answer, yes.
Yes, yes, that is.
Good answer, but can you elaborate a little bit?
What's the rent on what we have?
Yes.
It better not be rent. It went way up.
Well, it's like a lease of, of what we have.
No, what, it went way up.
Where is it?
Um, because what you're looking at is we need to purchase our ink supplies. We went through a five-year expected, um, ink usage in one year. So we're having to buy ink now.
I don't know, it's one of the ones for the plotter right here. It's not more cost efficient outsourced, it'd say to a local business?
Not for the use.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did look into this when we, when we, when we brought the plotter here, we looked into that.
How about less paper? More electrons?
Yes.
Okay.
This is the one that, Heather, this is, this, this.
We can buy a lot of iPads with this.
This is the one by your desk, right?
This is.
Right, the big giant printer.
And it supports the community. It, it supports, uh, a myriad of functions.
I'm guessing we're gonna use it less with the master plan done.
I could not.
Because we were printing a lot of big giant maps for master plan stuff that we're not gonna do.
We had a lot of, uh, different products, we're doing trails, we're doing, um, every color map that you see.
Happy birthday banners.
No, but we did do a mock-up for the new town monument on it.
We did, and, and that used, that used four years for me.
Really?
Oh, wow.
Did it really?
It used a lot of it.
Wow. Oh, wow.
Okay.
But it's okay.
It is what it is.
Very important project.
Yeah, it is what it is.
We're meeting tomorrow, one o'clock on that project.
But we, but we do support, um, parks and recreation, um, functions. And we do support, um, we've done, you are the one.
Posters and things. Yeah, I've seen them, yeah, ads and the posters and, yeah.
We're good.
Why do we need two of them? Why do we need two?
I think everybody says we're good.
We have two of those plotters.
One's upstairs, um, which is just the black, the black machine.
It's black and white.
Why can't we share one?
That's what we started.
You why, yeah, why we have two?
That also scans. And then this one is, um, a inkjet. It's not a laser, so it's relatively inexpensive color.
Can we combine? Do we need two?
We would, if we're to get a, a color, a black and white end color laser, it's expensive. Um, the model that's equivalent to the upstairs one, which is your laser printer, is, um, it was gonna be an annual cost of twenty-five thousand.
We're being just one of the.
Hold time.
They should have looked at it.
No, no, real, real quick, why is a?
Yes, um, our contract.
Um, our contract price.
When we got the color printer, there was no increase in our monthly cost either. What they have downstairs is basically free. We're paying for the upstairs one, because we weren't using that very much. So they said here have the color one, and.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, so we're getting two printers for the Christmas ones.
All right, move on. All right, anything else?
You can take the fifty thousand now for the study if you want. It wouldn't hurt my feelings any.
Ken was suggesting a fifty thousand dollar study on printer usage.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, the fifty thousand dollars wouldn't hurt my feelings, you took it out.
Okay, so if we're going with planning and zoning on this page.
All right, what's next?
I know, the people too.
Let's turn to the next page, page six, and we have the last section of planning and zoning, which is consulting fees. This allows for services as needed, and I think it pertains mostly to the master plan implementation.
Implementation thereof, um, and, and that may be an item, um, that, that we're not certain that we're gonna spend. We have a lot of initiatives that will, we can realize.
Well, I mean, it looks like that would be twice what we've, more than twice what we've used in the last couple of years.
Yeah, can, can you all take a reduction in that one to say twelve hundred?
Sure, or if, if it's more comfortable, um, it could be on an as needed basis where we could come back as.
Twelve hundred adds the.
Well, I mean, I'm looking, you use, you did use nine twenty back in thirteen, so twelve hundred is probably a reasonable.
Four hundred, yeah, I would leave some. You don't wanna come back, we're budgeting now.
Yeah, re- remember, if you, anytime you wanna come back to us, you're probably looking at two months before you get an answer.
I, I just don't wanna.
I would ask the council to drop that to twelve hundred.
Get it now, get it now while you can.
Okay, do anybody have a problem with twelve hundred, the mayor's request?
No.
Done.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Okay, then we can move into economic development. Melissa, can you answer your questions there?
I, I've already scrutinized this to council notes, and I've asked councilman, uh, King to come back with a compromise, because if you look at this holistically, we're overall increasing our funding for economic development, downtown revitalization. You're gonna see a budget line item there for downtown managers, so I'd asked them to tighten their pencils, because there's other expenses they weren't aware that we were making and commitments to the businesses. I was, wanted to be careful not to make too much of a commitment. So they did come back and sharpened their pencils, but you will see some slight increases in this, given the economic climate, I think that's appropriate.
And, and that's what we're trying to do. Um, we're, we're kind of viewing economic development now as not only a downtown issue, but there, there has to be, we, we have to deal with all of our businesses on the, on the outskirts of the town.
On the outside of town. And you actually see in downtown, there's a reduction in the budget.
Right.
For this year. But overall, you'll see some, some extras that we've thrown in there.
A, a lot of, a lot of the focus is on downtown with the, you know.
Always has been, and that is, as for the survey, people want.
We have, we have a lot of, a lot of things we wanna do downtown, but this is not the only place that economic development occurs.
So, one question, what's the billboard sign?
It's on side of Bingu's store.
Okay, so the caboose is gonna be there, so I'd strike it, because you're not gonna see it.
That's if it's placed there.
Well, that was our decision, was the decision's going.
Yeah, that's a good point, Scott. We gonna move it?
I was thinking about that.
You still won't see it.
If we can salvage it and move it and replace.
The billboard?
Yeah.
I haven't talked to anybody else about it.
That's, that's Rob's grand billboard.
Yeah, we don't own the billboard.
So why are we putting twenty five hundred in there?
But, but we budgeted to redo it, but you're right, there's, here's some, some competing interests.
We, we, it was budgeted.
Before we made the decision on the caboose.
So that there would be an opportunity for the town and other organizations like the Arts Alliance to use that for advertising, for promotion.
Got it. So, I would strike it.
But it's going away.
The caboose, whether we put it on the one side of the parking lot or the other, you're not gonna see the sign.
The billboard's not gonna be any good.
So, we need to cut it.
I'd say council should strike, good point, Scott.
We're, Scott, we're.
Strike what line?
So the line item is, uh, where the heck was it? Um, downtown streetscape improvement, so go about a third down under fifty two twelve. Downtown revitalization, third line item, sub bullet. In there is, uh, the ba, the number they wanted was fifty eight, twenty eight.
Billboard sign twenty five hundred of that. So drop that by twenty five hundred.
Got it.
I had brought this up to the mayor, uh, last year a couple of times, and I just thought about it. Uh, was a sign out by McDonald's where.
Yeah.
There's a sign there now, was putting an electronic sign with advertised businesses and events going in town.
Oh, did that not make it in the budget? That, my apologies.
You wanted to.
I priced it around.
You want an electronic billboard?
Well, no, 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 no.
You wanted to improve those.
The reasoning behind this was that, uh.
He wants something different.
The Lions Club owns the one out there now.
Correct.
And a lot of, uh, events can't get on there for some reason, so it was brought to my attention, maybe we can have something else. So I bought to the mayor, but he can put his own sign up.
Yeah. What was, what was the number on that?
It's gonna cost twenty five, thirty thousand dollars.
I would suggest the town council put that in. Now, when we say digital, there's gonna be some pushback, cause we're a historic town, but you don't want it rolling.
But we're saying twenty five to thirty K.
No, it won't be rolling, this is just permanent signs, you can change the lettering on it electronically. Uh, I went to two different signs.
Are we talking out there where the, where the signs are now?
We have two posts and people put up cheap banners and whatever, on the same farm where the, the Lions sign sits, it would be sitting right there.
Do we own that land? Is that property that we own?
Yes.
We, we have to find that out, but.
Scott.
So, so real quickly, great idea, until we have assigned ordinance, you can't do it because it's in violation of the.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
You can't. The only LED, the only LED signs we can have besides the fire department is a gas station.
Open and closed.
Well, even the school?
Well, open and close, that's it. But, but it's, it's essentially, you cannot have schools.
Let's, let's bring it back for a budget amendment to see if it's consistent with the sign ordinance.
And we, and we still have.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, the sign ordinance is not gonna be passed by, by the time this budgeted.
No, so we can bring it back.
But by next year's it will be.
Ken, you can bring it back as an amendment, and make it, make it consistent with the sign.
I would also suggest we may wanna go with a sign that's consistent with the ones we have in the parks.
I do too, I agree. So try to do it that. And we gotta be careful with digital, we don't want red glowing, we want to do something that's.
You don't want pulsing with some music.
Definitely pulsing.
Boom, boom, boom.
Yeah.
But perhaps like a, like a white digital that can be changed.
It's ten o'clock.
Anything else, uh, in this section for economic development?
Exactly what it looks like.
All right.
But maybe like a white digital.
We're done with economic development.
Okay, then we're done, um.
Is that it?